Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one study session. We're going to go ahead and get started. Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one study session. We're going to go ahead and get started, and we will start with public comment on agenda items. This evening, we have one agenda item, which is the two thousand and twenty-two proposed budget presentation. And I will ask anyone who has signed up for that to join us at the podium. You will have three minutes to speak. Please say your first name, spell your last name, and give us your address. We have one person signed up on our list to speak tonight. That's Mr. Don Wood, who has joined us at the podium. Please give us your first name, spell your last name, and give us your address, and then you may start for your three minutes.
Okay, my name is Don Wood, W-O-O-D. I live at seventy-three eighty-five West Twenty-eighth Avenue, right over here. That's all you need.
Yes, sir. Now you have three minutes to give us your comment.
Okay, well, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I'm here tonight representing the Wheat Ridge Historical Society. First, I want to thank the city for the positive relationship that we've had with the city over the years and continuing. It's been a real blessing for the historical society. The other thing is that this year, continuing from this time on, we have had a big cut in our museum hours. Some people have interpreted that as a cut to the budget. And recently, our latest information is that it's not actually a cut to the budget, but the reallocation of funds to archiving. The museum hours have been cut from twenty hours a week, having a museum open, to five. We're only open on Fridays for five hours. In past, I think, looking at, say, the sign-in sheets from the museum and the tours and so forth, it's really slow in a lot of the weeks. We don't have a lot of tours. But a lot of the time, a lot of the interior maintenance on the buildings and the collections happens during those hours when we have a paid docent there. That accounts for a lot of the work of the historical society up to this point. So we're struggling a bit at the moment to fill in with volunteers to get this done. We're also going to try to extend the museum hours with volunteers. But anyway, with the money that we understand has been earmarked for archiving, we had a meeting today with the head archivist from History Colorado, who gave us a lot of good information about how to go about some of the archiving and digitizing of the collections that we have. We have an extensive collection of documents that are stored in the old post office that are desperately in need to be properly archived, stored, catalogued, and so forth. So that's what we're working on, and that's where we are budget-wise. We do appreciate what we have gotten from the city. The city has done a great job of maintaining it, especially the exterior, the parks, and so forth. And, well, if there's any questions or you need to get in touch with us in any way, you can always do it at the Wheat Ridge Historical Society on Fridays from ten to two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I'll now ask if there's anyone else who would like to comment on the two thousand and twenty-two proposed budget presentation that has not signed up. Now would be your opportunity, and we'll also look to our city clerk to see if there's anyone online that would like to speak. Clerk has said there is none, so we will close the public comment section of this meeting, and we will move forward with our first agenda item, two thousand and twenty-two proposed budget presentation, City Manager Goff.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoppy. Happy to be here this evening. Seems like we have a, there's only a couple of people missing, but it seems like a small crowd this evening for some reason. But please, there's plenty of food up there, so if you guys continue to get hungry, our guests, too, if you'd like some food. There's plenty of food up there, so help yourselves. And we welcome, all of our staff is here this evening, our department directors and other staff are here this evening to help with our presentation. Very excited to be here this evening. This is, the city clerk was joking with me this morning. He remembered, actually, something from last year. I said it was my nineteenth budget, right? So he said, "This must be your twentieth budget." I said, "It is," so. Twenty budgets! And, you know, it's, this is probably the best budget that I think I've been able to present to a city council, so very proud of that. Wheat Ridge is in a very, very good place right now. And despite the pandemic and all the challenges we've been seeing, I'm very happy with our financial situation, so hopefully you'll see that this evening. But we're going to try to trade off speaking parts here and pass it around a little bit, so you won't just hear from me all night. But I will start off. Oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah. And Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Director, is she up on that screen? Nope. Karen's waving, but we can't see her, Karen. I can see her on that computer. She is, she's at a Parks and Rec conference this evening, so she's zooming in to speak to her part of the budget. But you know everybody else. I don't think we need to do introductions, do we? We know everybody else in the back here, but. So let's get started. It's six hours. I told Councilmember Osterbeck, so you starting the clock? There's only sixty-nine slides, I think. So we'll get moving here. So, you know, the challenges and uncertainties we faced in two thousand and twenty really didn't end that year on December thirty-first. In many ways, this year has been as equally challenging, and we continue to face the pandemic, unfortunately, and that is continuing to roll on a bit. And just supporting Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge's booming economy that we've been seeing over the last several years, it's been a challenge, but I think we've been doing a great job in tackling new regulatory issues that City Council has brought forward. But we've, we're able to accomplish a lot over the last year and proud of that. Just very, very proud of how our organization and all of our employees have stepped up to continue providing exceptional programs and services to our residents, and so thankful for this council, your support, and our community support and leadership you provided during this time. It was, it was a difficult time for a lot of us, but you guys being there and supporting us and helping staff made the last year or so much easier. So tonight, we would first like to take a kind of a quick look back and look at some of our accomplishments over this last year. Then we'll jump into some more of the budget, so I think we have the agenda up there. So we'll talk about the council's visions and priorities, do a quick year-end review, look at all of our major funds in the budget, look at council's strategic priorities and show you how this budget addresses those, and then look at our proposed staffing and benefits for next year. And then looking ahead at some of the fiscal opportunities and challenges that we see coming up, and then talk about the remaining budget process for this year. Next slide, please. And thankfully, we've been able to show this every year for the last several years. The city was just awarded, again, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. And this was for last year's budget, the two thousand and twenty-one budget. To earn this award, the budget must meet a number of detailed criteria established by GFOA, which is a national finance association. Then our budget is reviewed by three experts from across the country to make sure that we're in compliance. And we've met, we are in compliance, so congratulations to everybody for that. So Wheat Ridge Vision two thousand and thirty-five, this is really why we're all here. And the budget is really a tool to help staff in the city council accomplish this vision. The vision is Wheat Ridge is an attractive and inviting city and community for families. Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods, is a hub of commerce with a choice of economically viable commercial areas, and has diverse transportation. Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship, and its residents enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle and are proud of their hometown. Wheat Ridge a great place to live, work, and play. And I think you will see in our budget presentation that we are meeting most of these core vision topics. And then, as you remember, back in February, you all met, February twentieth, and came up with eight priorities that you have asked staff to focus on in the next couple of years. And those are listed here. I won't go through these on this slide, because the next slide, a couple of slides will address these. And just real briefly, we'll look at the accomplishments that we've achieved so far on each of these priorities. The first is new efforts of engagement in government. You remember, we've held a study session on that, and one item that council directed us to do was to expand tenant notification or occupant notification, I think is the word we're using, for different type of land use cases. And then we have a public hearing scheduled for that issue on November eighth. There's much more to come for this priority, but these are a couple of things that we've accomplished so far. Implement bulk plan in all residential zone districts. We will have that scheduled very soon for a future study session. The same with reexamining and advancing sidewalks on Thirty-eighth Avenue. We should have a study session scheduled in early two thousand and twenty to look at that. Whoops, two thousand and twenty-two. Big typo. Caught that. Review the mission, vision, mission, and funding of local works. We had a study session on that. There was consensus from City Council to continue supporting local works with funding, and we will talk about that funding this evening. Streamline the permit processes. City Council adopted a tax code update. Council approved an agreement with the state of Colorado for the sales and use tax system. And we've hired a licensing technician to help with all of our new licensing programs. Commercial corridor improvements, we will get a study session scheduled next year for that. And policy on non-conforming accessory dwelling units, we do have a study session scheduled for November fifteenth. And then the last one, a big one, is homelessness. Developing solutions and working with partners to address homelessness. We've had, you've had numerous updates on that, but we're continuing to coordinate regionally with our Jefferson County partners on the navigation centers programs. And the county, I think, I believe I sent an email out to you recently in the last week or so. County released an RFP to find a partner to help us develop and hopefully construct two navigation centers in Jefferson County. We've committed quite a bit of more staffing this last year to critical areas in Wheat Ridge to help with our homeless population. We've done many, many more additional cleanup efforts across the city. And of course, our navigator, homeless navigator, is very active. Her client base now is up to fifty-nine people, and that includes, majority of those are in Wheat Ridge, but some of those are also in Golden and Edgewater. And quite a few really cool stories and successes that we're seeing with that navigation program. I'm not sure what the number is right now, but we have numerous clients that we've gotten into permanent housing or into other services that they may need, so some successes there, and we're thrilled about that. Big accomplishment this last year was Wheat Ridge is an all-American city. Yay! And with some prodding from a couple of council members, we took that task on, and staff jumped into it. And in the community, we had some great community partners in that. And we really came together to showcase our community's strength, resiliency, and quality of our civic infrastructure. We showcased our progress in areas of community engagement and sustainability, how we came together to support our businesses and neighbors through the pandemic, and how we are addressing racism and equity. So very, very proud of that. So thank you for the two councilmembers who twisted our arms and got us going on that. And Rachel and I were talking about it this morning, and it's like, first try, and we got it. So very proud of that. Our pandemic response, as I mentioned earlier, it's, unfortunately, it's not quite over. You know, I think the, obviously, the first year was the most challenging. It was so new to everybody, and there was a lot of uncertainty. But the city really never slowed down this last year or since the pandemic started. And we're pretty much back to full in-person service across the city. There's a few hiccups here and there, which we can talk about later, but a lot of that was just with some staffing issues that we've had that the whole country's suffering through right now. But I think for the most part, we are back in full service. But in the last six months of this year, we've worked to keep up with the changing health department guidance, and it's, there's still probably some changes coming. We've assisted employees and the public with getting vaccinations. We reconciled our cares expenses and continued with remote and hybrid services. The recreation center and outdoor pool were both opened to full service again this year. Partly, we had to cut back on the pool a little bit just because we couldn't find lifeguards. City Hall opened for full service back on June first. And we're just continuing to keep a close eye on the changing guidance and trend data from the health departments. And hopefully, this will all be over very soon. But we learned a lot over the last year or so, and I think we've become much more efficient in providing many more opportunities for public engagement and outreach. And so there was a few silver linings, I think, in what we had to go through over the last year or so. And Wheat Ridge is a hot place still. We're continuing to draw new businesses and other revenue-generating opportunities into our community. This last year, we've had close to three hundred new business licenses issued out of, I think we have, close to, we have about forty-five hundred, I think, total, and three hundred new ones this last year. A lot of them are not brick-and-mortar establishments in Wheat Ridge, but a lot of online-type services. And, but there are definitely some new brick-and-mortar businesses coming through, which we'll talk about, and you've seen across the city. The Clark Creek Crossing Development is a huge opportunity for our community and the city. As you all know, we've been working on this for many, many years, and after many years of planning and legwork, the project is really coming to fruition. We actually see things coming out of the ground and people moving into apartments and stores opening up. The Outlook Family, Multi-Family Project is open. It's about three hundred residential units of high quality, and they're going to expand with some additional units just across the street. The Come and Go Filling Station and Convenience Store has opened, the Foothills Credit Union, or Regional Office, their corporate office is under construction. Lutheran Hospital, of course, is under construction. The picture here is the groundbreaking we all had. They anticipate opening date of fall of two thousand and twenty-four. The access ramps, which was a major two-E bond project, those are pretty much done. I think there's some punchless things that have to be completed out there, but they're open. And there's several other projects under development review for the Clark Creek Crossing Project, including hotel, fitness center, coffee shop, and hopefully soon, the restaurants, the crossing port part of the development that will include the restaurants and taverns and shops. The Longspreek Metropolitan District, which is the metro district that oversees that development, they expect to issue bonds this fall, this November. And if you remember, that was the trigger point for when they were going to pay the city back for the hook ramp project and then also the actual environmental study that the city undertook to get that project done. So they will owe the city about five hundred thousand dollars for the environmental work and then close to ten million for the hook ramp project. So if those bonds go through, we should have all that money this year. And we weren't, this just kind of came up the last few weeks. We weren't expecting it probably until next year, but they decided because of the municipal bond market is so good right now that it's best to do it now instead of wait. So if they can get their issues, their bonds issued this November, they told us that we would potentially be refunded the full amount, the ten-point-five million. And so we have not budgeted any of those revenues in this year's budget or next year's budget. So those funds will come unrestricted to City Council, so you can choose how to use those. So that's an exciting opportunity. Then some legislative changes the council's been working on with staff over the last, this last year. Just a few things that we have implemented, including regulations pertaining to short-term rentals. I think we have close to seventy, maybe, short-term rentals licensed now. They start submitting lodger's tax, I think, August first, when they start submitting lodger's tax. We have a new tobacco retailing ordinance, and so ordinance is dealing with pedestrian safety. And then, of course, our massage and noise ordinances. Massage ordinance, I think we've seen great success with, and the chief can speak to that if you'd like. But we're actually been able to ask, get a few illicit businesses to shut down, so, and move out. So we're happy about that. So great work, council, on those ordinances. With that, I'll shut up for a bit, put my mask back on, but turn it over to, I think, Greg. Am I on the right slide still? Yep. Greg Knutson's going to give a few updates on what Public Works has been doing the last year.
Thank you, Patrick. Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you. Well, just briefly, I'll get the obvious one out of the way. We're in the process of transitioning the Watchword project to Public Works from community development. It's very exciting. We're looking forward to a fantastic project with the team that we've put together with AECOM, CDOT, and of course, all the city staff involved. So I think we're in for a good project, and we're going to do everything we can to see that we follow through and take a proactive approach. Some of the other things that we're starting, we got our first electric vehicle into the fleet this year. That was pretty exciting. We have another one up for request next year. And so far, we haven't had any problems with that. We have charging stations, two of them installed for that at City Hall and at the rec center. One thing that really came to be noticed this year was the substantial increase in utility locates that the city is required to do by the A-1-1 process, and I'll get into more detail of that later on in the presentation. But we have been meeting those requirements. The other thing, Patrick touched on it, is we're in the later stages of the year, but we did have the early part of the year with COVID. And our operations services with snow plowing were maintained with, we still had snow despite COVID. And we had great, great response by our team as usual, and got a lot of compliments from cities and other cities and citizens here, and they always appreciate that. Our construction services also maintained their high level of inspections for permits that came through for construction and inspection. One final thing, and with the invaluable help of Mary Ann, we are wrapping up finally our APWA documentation input for accreditation. We're hoping that we can get before the panel early next year, maybe late this year, but probably early next year. So we're really excited about that, and that's kind of a summation. One thing I just want to add is there are so many little details, service requests that are received, both by construction services and operations, literally hundreds, that we respond to every day. And it's something that is kind of somewhat overlooked, but you always notice it when you go down the street and that couch isn't there anymore that was there an hour before. Little things like that that are hard to document, but we keep track of it as best we can. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief, right?
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate that. Despite my best efforts, Patrick, I'll probably be longer than you want. But we did have a busy year in the police department for a lot of reasons. Certainly, we still working against the pandemic, and certainly, a lot of integration of legislative issues that surround the criminal justice system. We spent a lot of time on those. Those are kind of behind-the-scenes activities that nobody sees, but that included expanded body-worn camera and a lot of legislative bills targeting some of the processes and procedures that police departments use in Colorado. This year, we've been able to hire six new recruits. That's very good compared to our surrounding jurisdictions and our peers. We're looking to see what happens as we head towards our end-of-the-year class in January and see if we can keep maintaining these high-level recruits. That's important to see if we need to change any of our business practices moving forward. But so far, we're encouraged at the level of staffing. We are one under our staffing level right now. That includes our recruits, but we're feeling pretty good about where we sit in relation to other agencies. We focused this year pretty heavily on some of our more challenged, long-term issues, obviously around I-70 and Kipling, a lot of cleanup efforts that we partnered with CDOT and other agencies. agencies, and of course, Public Works and Parks and Rec on those, making progress assisting our persons experiencing homelessness and working through some of those issues. We spent a pretty good amount of time on our massage regulations. I'll just give you a quick update since the council was so instrumental in that. We started with 37 massage oriented businesses when the ordinance was enacted and passed. Since then, nine businesses have closed, one due to business, the pandemic put them out of business, eight others as a result of interactions with the police department. Four of them currently have a nexus towards prostitution, several that just did not want to comply with the business licensing regulations. And I think we had one other in there that was another type of violation. So it really has taken a lot of the bad actors out of the game, so to speak, and really human trafficking was our primary concern, and I think we've made an impact in that area you have, and we've assisted with that. So we worked hard on that. The noise ordinance violation, we still using that. We've had approximately 40 calls that were simply noise ordinance violations. We've issued two citations so far, but we've done a lot of education around that. That was our primary goal, as it is with any new ordinance where we can, to educate people, and we haven't seen repeat offenders once they've been educated. So having that tool and not overusing it, I think, was our sort of our mental, our mindset going forward, and we've been able to do that, and it's given us the backing to be able to quiet noise down. We're working, obviously, on the hotel ordinance. We had a catalytic converter event. I don't know if any of you saw that, where we went out first in the state, potentially first in the nation, according to some reports, where we went out and marked catalytic converters, one of the popular items for motor vehicle thefts. We marked over 500 in two days. We ran out of stickers. We've been contacted by agencies across the country that want to know how to do it. So we've become a leader in that by default, I guess. So that was a very popular program. Again, we've navigated many of our legislative issues internally with our process. We've needed to navigate that with our officers who are concerned about their livelihood and whether or not they'd be able to sustain themselves in this job. That goes a long way to officer wellness, and I think so far, we've been able to get through that fairly well. We've focused on a couple of things, five things when I came into this job that I said I wanted to focus on relationship-based policing. You heard me talk about that before. It's been a focus. It was muted during COVID. We continue to ramp that up and really push that out in the community, push that out to the officers. Tomorrow, we'll have an event tomorrow morning at the rec center. Meet your Wheat Ridge Police Department from 8 to 10. I'll be out there with the officers, and we're just looking to come where people are when they're busy and just interact with them. So that'll be happening. Training, obviously, the better trained an agency is, the more we'll be able to sustain ourselves without any trouble. We've focused on becoming a hub for training. We offer our room upstairs for training, and we get a lot of free spots for that. So we've been able to give our officers a lot of training. Leadership, good, strong leaders out there will prevent officers from making mistakes. We've done a lot around leadership training. Return to proactivity, that was muted during the pandemic. We've been much more proactive. And then last, on officer wellness and a family atmosphere, to try and keep officers in Wheat Ridge in the family here. So those are a few things that we were able to accomplish this year. We also have Officer Raynor Johnson, just completed a computer forensics class down in Alabama. Will be one of the few in the region that has that. And 70 dumpsters on four dumpster days that we were able to accomplish for the community. So I have many more, and if Mr. Goff wants to hear me go on for a while, I will. But other than that, I'll cut it off there and say it's been a busy year. So thank you.
We will now pass it on to Karen, virtually.
Hi, everybody. Similar to the chief, I think I could talk for a very long time about the accomplishments over the past year of the Parks and Recreation Department. It's definitely been a busy year, but just to share a few highlights, in 2021, we were able to reopen the Active Adult Center after a year-long closure. So that was pretty significant. The Active Adult Center staff never stopped working hard to serve the active adults in Wheat Ridge during the closure, and they offered drive-through events and a wide variety of online programs. We're also excited to reopen the Anderson Pool and the Children's Pavilion at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center in 2021. And the pool was opened through Labor Day for the first time. Another important note, we received our CAPRA, which is the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies Reaccreditation. We just found that out a couple of days ago, that we did successfully complete that. And the department worked extremely hard to review and update hundreds of documents, policies, and procedures in order to successfully meet the reaccreditation requirements, which happen every five years. And that's in order to demonstrate that our organization and our staff provide the Wheat Ridge community with the highest level of service. The Regenerate Wheat Ridge Program is something I think is awesome to note in terms of highlights for the year. The city teamed up with the Jefferson Conservation District to apply for NACD, which is the National Association for Conservation District's grant, which allowed the team to offer a variety of very successful educational sessions and events related to regenerative agriculture. It also funded a program that facilitates local land producer partnerships. And on a related note, we were thrilled to bring back the Goat Parade in 2021. We hosted many volunteer cleanup events. The city supported many volunteer cleanup events along the Clear Creek Trail, as well as areas within the city where litter accumulates. This year, it really felt that the year brought an influx of individuals wanting to give back to the communities where they live, work, and play. So our biggest event, held in collaboration with the Jefferson County Open Space Team, is being held this Saturday, September 25th, for National Public Lands Day. So that's my shameless plug. There's still time to register and share that information with your neighbors. And finally, I wanted to mention that the Horticulture Team has reintroduced the carnation to Wheat Ridge through their efforts in propagating and raising our own carnation stock in the greenhouse. This effort saves thousands of dollars per year and allows the team to create a wider variety of annual plantings. So with that, I'll turn it back to Patrick.
Thanks, Karen. So that was just a kind of a quick summary of what's happened this last year. And obviously, as kind of Greg mentioned, there's a lot of things you don't see or we're not going to report out on. It's, you know, it's amazing what we get accomplished in, on an average day here in the city. So I just want to thank the management team. You're only successful if you surround yourself with great people, and this group has worked very, very hard. So just want to thank them for everything they've done, and all the successes we see is because of this group. So now we're going to get into some, you want to clap that? Thank you. Now we want to get into some numbers, so stay awake, Val. Are you with me? All right. We'll try not to make this too painful, but numbers are fun. You need to know what the numbers are. So we on the right side? Yes. So this is kind of an important slide to show you kind of the big difference between what the original budget was in 2021 and what we're estimating it's going to be at the end of the year. As we've mentioned to you many, many times, we presented a very, very conservative budget to you in the, in, I can't remember, it was November or October of 2020, when we were in the middle of the pandemic still, very conservative. So our beginning fund balance in the original budget that you adopted back in October of 2020 was just about 12.8 million. We're estimating that's going to be a little less of 12 million. Revenues, we projected just over 36 million. We're actually estimating we're going to bring in about 45.8 million at the end of the year. So a lot of that was use tax that we've seen from the Lutheran Project, which wasn't budgeted, and some of the CARES Act, let's see, I'm getting my years mixed up, 21, was there CARES Act dollars in 21? No. But just really significant revenue increases that we didn't project because of the pandemic and the uncertainty, use tax and sales tax, all the development that's going on in the community and fees. And that was with a lower than expected, not expected, but low revenues from the Parks and Rec Department because of the closures and such. So total available funds increased from 49 million to 57 million. Our expenditures, we budgeted at just over 38 million, and we're estimating we're going to spend about 40.6 million at the end of the year. And if council remembers, we brought a mid-year budget, supplemental budget appropriation in June, which we promised we would to city council if revenues were looking good, and that was about 1.1 million. So that's most of that change. So the biggest, I think, numbers to really look at, the ending fund balance we were projecting was only going to be about 10 million, but we're projecting a $17 million ending fund balance at the end of this year. So that's a huge increase, and the unrestricted fund balance portion is an increase from just under 8 million to just under 15 million. So very, very healthy reserves right now, and so very proud of that. And so the just story of that slide is things are looking good. And then, as I mentioned, this mid-year budget adjustment that we did in June, this is what we called the wish list. We told council back in 2020, the end of 2020, that if revenues look good mid-year 21, we'll probably bring some expenditures requests to council to keep moving forward on some programs and services. And this is a list of what we brought forward, mainly filling vacant positions that we didn't fill. We did add two new police officers, one for crime prevention and one for property crimes, detective. We made the sustainability coordinator full-time, replaced some vehicles that we had deferred, some projects, the 44th Avenue Planning Subarea Plan was put on hold, but we brought that back, and then some money to do an analysis on the city's system-wide financial management package system, some technology improvements, other services and equipment, and some training and development for staff. So that was just over 1.1 million. And now I will turn it over to Ally to do some more specific budget overview.
Great. Hi, everybody. Ally Shack Admin Services Director. So that was a great recap, I think, of 2021. And now let's dive into 2022 and talk about the proposed budget, getting into the good stuff. We'll just talk about the fund structure. We'll touch base on that, make sure we're all clear on our fund structure, and then we'll look at the revenues and the expenditures. So just as a quick refresher, this chart has actually changed since last year. So this is our fund structure. And, you know, the general fund is there at the top in green. That's the kind of our main operating budget, right? And then below it, we've got some special funds, public art, police investigation, open space, municipal court, conservation trust, equipment replacement, and crime prevention. Below that, capital improvement fund. And then below that is the new one, and that is the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Projects Fund. We've added that. It's set up specifically to track, so you all know, obviously, you all recall the IGA and the approvals to go ahead and move forward with the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Projects. So this fund, in working with our bond council and our finance staff, the advice they gave us is set something up separate for the city to accept transfer payments from Renewal Wheat Ridge for the projects that the city is managing. Okay? So not all the funds will come in. The money will sit with Renewal Wheat Ridge, but as the city issues contracts to do the work, revenues will come into that fund and be expended from that fund. So in theory, there's zero money at the end of each year in there. We're bringing it in, we're spending it. So that's that new fund, and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail a bit later on. And then at the very bottom, finally, you see the 2E fund. So just a little refresher on our fund structure. Might as well just go straight to the sticker shock. This year's budget total is a little over 82 million, which for us, for the city of Wheat Ridge is a pretty big budget. Remembering, of course, that that includes a new Renewal Wheat Ridge Fund, it includes $15 million in 2022 for Wadsworth alone. There's, and there's just so many really great projects in that 82 million. So that's what we're going to get into today. So really, on this slide, I would just look at that far right column, right, Patrick? I have right-left issues because it's different where I come from. Just kidding. It's not, no, it's not. But I just blame everything on that. So if you look at the all funds, you can see the beginning fund balance of about 30 million and an ending fund balance total of 26.5 million. And the next column just to the left is all the, is the, are the funds without 2E included. And it's funny because, you know, for a while there, I'm sure when you were initially presenting the budget in 2018, 2E was a giant portion of the budget. And again, we'll kind of talk a little bit later about how now we're pretty much, we're wrapping that up, at least this portion of 2E. So moving on, just a little pie chart that shows sort of the proposed budget by fund, and you can see that the general fund makes up about 54% of that. You know, it's increased, this total budget is actually 38% greater than the 2021 budget, the original adopted budget, which sounds like a lot, but it's a little deceiving because, as I mentioned, you know, you include a new fund like Renewal Wheat Ridge or you include a major project like Wadsworth, and that sort of throws things out of whack just a little bit. Okay, let's turn our attention to the general fund. And this slide shows you the general fund projected revenues. We continue to be cautiously optimistic about the city's revenue projections. We do continue to forecast conservatively. This budget in particular includes very modest development-related revenues. So, you know, we feel good about that. It's a 4.8% increase to the year-end estimated revenues, the revenues that we expect to bring in in 2021, but it's a 26.4% increase to the original 2021 budget. And as you know, as we've talked about, we were very conservative on that. So again, looking at the pie chart, this shows you again, shop, shop, shop Wheat Ridge, right? Whatever you do, almost 60% of our revenue, a higher, a higher percentage than last year of budgeted revenues. And again, we've gone conservative on development-related revenues because we don't really have a lot of control over that timing, but almost 60% of it is sales tax. Yeah. So we're projecting about $48 million. Again, the sales tax, the city's largest revenue source, conservatively projects a 4.8% increase in 2022, over 2021, over the estimated year-end budget, and a 14.2% increase compared to the 21 adopted budget. So earlier when I mentioned sort of that 26.4, a chunk of that is also, is also Parks and Rec revenue, which we expect to bring back to full strength. So just a little tidbit, to date in 2021, sales tax has actually increased 13% over the same period of time last year. But this, our estimated year-end budget only includes an estimated 8% growth. So again, we do tend to budget on the conservative side, and that's always stood us in good stead. You know, as I mentioned earlier, as Patrick mentioned earlier, over 300 new business licenses have been pulled year-to-date, showing considerable sales tax growth in, as well as brick and mortar and online sales or deliveries into the city. We talked about that a little bit with the sales and use tax update and the code update, just making sure that our code really aligns with the state, encouraging online retailers to remit their tax to us. So we're definitely starting to see that move in the right direction. You know, I mentioned Parks and Recreation Fee Revenue accounted for here in services, we know took the biggest hit during the pandemic, as we know, sales tax didn't suffer as much as we had been concerned about, but it is budgeted at full strength in 2022, which is a whopping 146% increase. So no pressure, Karen. This slide, probably easier to look at on your handouts, just shows the, sort of the one-time revenues. So those are things that we get real concerned about. We want to look at what's the sustainable revenue source and what are one-time revenues. So you can see the orange are the one-time, and we want to be really careful not to get too excited about those as an ongoing source. And the hospital development is a perfect example of something that is fairly one-time. And Patrick will talk a little bit about what we propose to do with that one-time funding. So the one-time funding that you see in 2022 is building use tax for the hospital and money for the American Rescue Plan Act that we'll talk about a little bit later as well. So that's that. And now let's look at general fund expenditures. Here you can see total expenditures, including transfers of 51.6 million. So the base budget is 44 million. Again, this is just the general fund. We are proposing $7.4 million in transfers to the CIP and 500,000 of that, so it's about 6.9 to the CIP and 500,000 into the Equipment Replacement Fund. That's a big investment for us, but again, it uses those, some of those one-time revenues. That's a big investment for us, but again, it uses those, some of those one-time revenues for things that we really want to accomplish or items like a new ERP system, the Enterprise Resource Planning that we've been talking about. We're going to do a study, but we need to start saving money to actually replace the system, right? So this actually, that's that's the story of this transfer. That's a big transfer for us, and it's really exciting. That's going to help us get a lot done. So, yeah, I think that's the story there. So moving along, we'll just talk a little bit about our ending unrestricted fund balance history. Again, this just shows a chart back to 2012. Patrick and I were laughing about this because really, it's not a great slide. It says we don't do a good job of projecting our ending fund balance. But what it says is, you know, if you look at the blue line, that's the budget, and the orange line is what actually happened. And so we, you know, we just want to demonstrate here that, again, we see no reason why this won't be the same story in 2022, where we we sit here, we know we're budgeting conservatively on revenues, where, you know, we typically do manage to come in under on expenditures, and yet we are we are proposing to you a big budget, a full budget, chock full, full of projects and services for our community that will still hit your target and unrestricted ending fund balance of 25%. And again, just a pie chart that shows by the breakdown, biggest, you know, 30% of the general fund expenditures going to the police department and other 17 to Parks and Recreation, et cetera. Again, you have this in your handout. And as I mentioned, oh, I don't think I mentioned, the general fund expenditure budget actually represents an 8% increase over the 2021 adjusted budget. So if you think how how lean we were trying to be in 2021, the adjusted budget, meaning that includes the wish list items that you that you that thank you for giving us in June, that that certainly helped provide additional services to the community, but the 2022 budget represents an 8% increase over that, over where we are budgeted today. It really does restore all of our programs, all of our services, and all of our staffing to full levels. So even today, we still have positions that are authorized by you, they're authorized headcounts, but they were never funded. They weren't funded in the original '21 budget, and we didn't come back to you and ask for them in the wish list. There are actually, there's a few in court, two or three positions, I think, in court. There's another position in PD, and there's the Landscape Inspection Program Manager in Community Development that today still aren't funding. This budget restores full funding for those positions. So that's what we're asking for today. And finally, for me, this chart just sort of goes over our expenditure history, again showing the ongoing versus one-time expenditures. And the little orange tip that you see on the chart in 2022, that is about $300,000 budgeted for COVID response using our ARPA funding, ARPA American Rescue Plan Act, and about 850,000, as you all know, we have a relationship with Charles Abbott and Associates that does all of our our building inspections and permits and and all of that work. So that's sort of the one-time expense for Charles Abbott associated with the hospital. Of course, we budget the revenue, and then we budget the expense for CAA. So that's that little orange tip. And I think that wraps up the general fund. We'll talk later a little bit more about ARPA and budget priorities, but for now, I'll turn it back to Patrick to talk about capital improvements.
Great. Thanks, Ally. Yeah, and as Ally mentioned, we'll move on to our CIP budget. And she mentioned earlier, too, and very excited about the amount of additional funds we're able to transfer for capital projects next year. You know, again, over the last 20 years, I think typically we've only been able to transfer maybe up to 3 million from general fund to do capital projects, and 1.3 this year. And we just weren't, that wasn't a sustainable revenue source for capital projects to get projects done. And the capital project you'll see, staff is going to help talk about these projects. It's really, it's much more robust, we're proposing for next year, bridge work, more road work, traffic management programs, drainage program projects, much, much more than we've ever been able to do. And as Ally mentioned, thankfully, we're able to transfer just under $7 million from the general fund to the CIP next year. And again, that is associated with the one-time revenues that we're receiving for the from the Lutheran campus use tax. So that's one-time revenue. We're going to transfer it to the CIP budget for one-time projects, and it's going to enable us to get much, much, much more done of in the capital budget next year. So, yeah, so all but 1 million of the projected use tax from the Lutheran project is being transferred to the CIP budget. We are, the 500,000 is being transferred to the Equipment Replacement Fund, which is essentially another type of capital budget for those projects that Ally mentioned. And then 500,000 we're keeping in the general fund to keep the general fund reserves at And as you can see in this chart, 90% of the capital projects next year are proposed for street projects. Again, Wadsworth makes up a good chunk of that, but we are able to almost double our preventative street maintenance projects and, as I mentioned, a lot of other projects, which I will turn it over to staff to talk about now. And I think Greg is going to start.
Thank you, Patrick. You've come to touch on it, and again, the obvious one is Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project and what it's going to bring to Wheat Ridge as far as accessing businesses when it's completed, just the safety factor at the intersections of 38th and 44th, a continuous sidewalk all along there, and of course, improved traffic flow. The other one is preventive street maintenance, which we hope we are asking for 3 million. As Patrick touched on, that will be a big benefit for us to do a lot of more milling and overlay of streets that desperately need it. And quickly, those streets that we are proposing, our Uppham Street between 38th and 44th Avenue, Youngfield from 32nd to 44th, 43rd Avenue, the long cul-de-sac there off of 44th, the business district through there, and then 29th Avenue from Sheridan to Fenton. Along with this preventive maintenance is also crack seal that we do on other streets that we've identified through the program that needed to try and keep our streets up up to grade as much as we can before we have to mill an overlay. Along with that as well is our concrete replacement program for areas that need it to keep those improvements safe and upgraded as much as we can. The 150,000 for striping, and also I'll mention back to preventive maintenance, striping is included with those maintenance projects. We still have $150,000 for striping maintenance, for bike paths, keeping those delineated as much as we can, and crosswalks, just whatever staff has identified, and we work closely with with Engineering Department and in Community Development to look at those projects and see what we need to do. Other major CIP projects, and Patrick mentioned what was our bridge improvements, the Youngfield Bridge is is the high priority for next year, as we work closely with CDOT on their bridge maintenance and use their reports to look at what we need to do. Then the other CIP projects are the drainage improvement projects, which staff has identified, and we look at culverts, various drainage ways that we need to improve as much as we can. We are finding out that we are reaching the endpoint, so to speak, of culverts that are going under the street when they were replaced or installed 30, 40 years ago, sometimes 50 years ago. In Incorporated Jeffco, they used a corrugated metal pipe. That pipe is deteriorating, it's rusting out. We are replacing the worst as they come up as best we can through our operations services. Of course, our ongoing program with the ADA improvements that we coordinate with in engineering and meet those standards through that program and the federal guidelines. And with that, I will turn it over to Ken for other major projects.
Thanks. Excuse me. Thanks, Greg. Yeah, just a few more examples of some some projects that are included in the proposed CIP. The first one's an exciting one. It's an update to the Clear Creek Master Plan Update, and that's necessitated by the fact that we got new mapping from FEMA, mapping that the good news is it takes a lot of properties in the Clear Creek Drainage out of the floodplain and out of the floodway, but we need to update our list in the master plan of projects that we can do to to further take properties out of the floodplain and make other improvements in that in that stormwater corridor to be consistent with the new mapping. So good news, but we need to spend a little bit of money there. Gateway signage is also has been a priority over the years for council. There's really two things in that budget. One, $25,000 to bring in a consultant that we we have a bid from AECOM to kind of refresh our overall master gateway signage program, take a fresh look at that moving forward if we're able to fund projects down the road. And then secondarily, the the gateway sign at Sheridan and 38th Avenue is in need of repair, so there's another 60,000 budgeted for that. And I think Karen was going to maybe comment on the parking lot?
Yes. Yep, that's correct. So we have 1.1 million budgeted for municipal parking lots specifically at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. So we plan to address subsurface issues with the full replacement of the parking lot at the Recreation Center, which is approaching 22 years of age. The service driveway area, which is what goes behind the Recreation Center, will not receive the full reconstruction. It will just receive a two-inch mill and overlay. And this is really a much-needed improvement and will improve safety for all of our visitors as well as alleviating the need for annual temporary repairs. I think Patrick has the next slide.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, so that that wraps up the proposed 2022 CIP budget, but just want to give you a quick snapshot of of what we're proposing for the next nine years in that budget, 2023 and beyond. And as we mentioned earlier, our hope is to be able to transfer more money on an annual basis to the CIP budget to keep up on some of these projects. So right now, we're projecting anywhere between four to four and a half million transfer every year, keeping our preventative street maintenance projects between 2 and 3 million a year. Then the Wadsworth will have another one, one-year 2023 of about 15 million in funding to finish that project. But other annual project funding, again, these are some of the things I mentioned earlier, excited. Usually, these these rows are zero for the years out, just because we don't have enough funds, but hoping to do, keep up with annual bridge maintenance, about 410,000 average through 2026, drainage every year of 200,000 to deal with drainage projects, ADA improvements, 50,000, striping maintenance, as Greg mentioned, 150,000, public improvement projects, 100,000. This is really to help with any, if there's private development coming into the city and there maybe there's a sidewalk nearby that the city could fill a sidewalk gap or or something else that can enhance a private project, we have funds put aside for that. Neighborhood traffic management program, this is, you know, we've we've had requests from council to look at this program a little bit more, but we're getting more and more requests from neighborhoods to handle neighborhood traffic issues. We typically only budgeted about 35,000 a year. We're proposing to budget 100,000 a year for the next several years. Street lights, 25,000, we do get requests from neighborhoods for street lights, traffic signal improvements, 100,000 a year. And then continued improvements to some of our facilities across the city, especially our parks, rec, and public works facilities are are very, very old, really not adequate or appropriate for for staff today. And we need to put some money into those to to make sure that they're safe and providing a comfortable environment for our staff and visitors. So that's CIP budget. Now we'll move on to the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Projects Fund that Ally mentioned earlier. And you should all remember, we, this wasn't too long ago, we brought an IGA to you, an IGA with between the city and the Urban Renewal Authority, Janice Hoppi is on the Urban Renewal Authority. But they are proceeding with the issuance of bonds. And it's bonds for the for one of the urban renewal areas, and that's the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Area. It's the biggest one, what you see up here on your slide now, basically goes, wraps around I-70 all the way from the city's boundary on on basically 32nd, and then comes down Kipling, and then flagpoles down to the 26th and Kipling Gold's Market Center. So it's a it's a lot of area. We have a lot of development in that area, which increases property tax assessments and therefore increases the amount of money available for a bond for Urban Renewal Authority. And they're looking at issuing bonds in November. And as I mentioned earlier, the bond market is very, very good right now for municipal bonds, so this is a great time to do it. They are looking at a project fund amount of about 35 million for projects, which we'll talk about here in a bit, and then also about $6 million to pay off a loan that the Urban Renewal Authority has for the Clear Creek Crossing Project. These bonds will be at a much lower interest rate than that that current bank loan, so it makes sense to pay that off. And so, let's see, I can't remember what's on my next slide. If I, am I going to turn it over to Ken? But we have several projects budgeted for 2022, about 5.9 million, and I will, in three different areas in the city, and I'll turn it over to Ken to talk about the first one.
Thanks, Patrick. Yeah, I get the pleasure of announcing what I think are some really very much worthy projects, but also exciting projects that we're able to fund with this bond issuance. So we're we're very excited about this. The first area that I'll highlight is the Applewood area. Patrick mentioned in some of his earlier remarks, some of the, you know, investment that we're seeing in that corridor in the Clear Creek Crossing side of things. As council is probably well aware, we've also seen some really good investment on the other side in the Applewood Shopping Center with the repurposing of the Walmart space with three great tenants and the investment in Hacienda, Colorado. So we're seeing some great private sector investment in that corridor. Unfortunately, the corridor itself could probably use some aesthetic improvement in our minds and could and probably hasn't needed that improvement for for years in terms of the Youngfield I-70 corridor on our western border, particularly with the the prominence that it's going to have now with all this new private sector investment and the people that that attracts. So we've identified about $5 million worth of improvements in this corridor, in the Youngfield corridor, roughly from 28th, the ramps that are outbound, eastbound I-70, up to the 40th Underpass that connects this side of that side of Wheat Ridge with the new Clear Creek Crossing area. So we were, we went out to David Evans and Associates earlier this year for a consulting services contract to identify a wide range of landscaping and fencing walls, gateway signage improvements that we that we think we can fund with these urban renewal funds. It's also really good timing because CDOT's doing some work there. CDOT is rebuilding that bridge structure, their I-70 bridge structure over 32nd Avenue. They're building it at a at a span length that will accommodate our desired bike and pedestrian upgrades under 32nd Avenue. So we'll be able to be able to fund those improvements. CDOT won't pay for those, but they're they're giving us the space to be able to use those urban renewal funds to build those. And then, again, a range of of just landscaping improvements, gateway signage improvements that I think are really going to brand that area in something that we can be proud of as one of our gateways to Wheat Ridge. Moving on to kind of a similar project, really, in a different location, so the I-70 Kipling Interchange also is planned to be widened. We, while CDOT has not identified funding as of yet, they continue to search hard for that. It's a very high priority for CDOT, major safety concerns with that interchange, and I think it's only a matter of time before they find the necessary funds to rebuild that interchange. When they do, we have plans in place that actually David Evans designed for us a couple years back to make what they call betterments to that project. So it could be betterments to the material used for the bridge structures or landscaping similar to what I've discussed for the the Applewood, Youngfield area. So we've set aside, again, $5 million in that area to make those betterments to that project when it eventually comes along. So very excited about that for the same reasons, right? I mean, just in terms of a real great opportunity to brand another one of the entries that people form their opinion of Wheat Ridge at that interchange. Also, as part of that, that Kipling Corridor, there's also a $1 million project to do road and bike path improvements at the intersection of 38th and and Kipling. That's fully designed, and we'll be ready to go to construction on that next year as well. And then finally- And then finally, at the TOD area, I think council is aware of what we did a few years back when we needed to find some money to complete the Clear Creek Crossing ramp project. We essentially borrowed 9.6 million from this area and deferred the 2B projects that we were anticipating being built in this area. While we had plans to get that money paid back, as Patrick discussed, from the Clear Creek Crossing project, which might happen soon, we're not compelled to. Those will be unrestricted funds, as Patrick mentioned. So, we can use those wherever we want in the city. Alternatively, we thought this was a really good use of urban renewal funds to fund the roughly $12 million in projects that we had held off on and deferred when we borrowed that money for the Clear Creek Crossing ramp. So, the street reconstruction, the bike pad bridge over the tracks, the plazas, the connection down to the frontage road. So, again, some really exciting projects that are going to really be cool additions to that TOD area.
I think that, you done?
That's it.
That's it for Ken, for now, anyway? Thanks, Ken. We're going to turn it over again to Karen to talk about a couple more special funds, the Open Space and Conservation Trust Fund.
Great, thank you. The Open Space Fund is a restricted fund and is funded by the half-cent sales tax per capita allotment through Jefferson County Open Space for the purpose of acquiring, developing, and maintaining open space and park properties within the city of Wheat Ridge. So, it's important to note that the Open Space Fund includes restricted and unrestricted funds. Our restricted funds are connected to the Green at 38th project, budgeted to be spent in 2022, as well as future Ward TOD projects. In the Open Space Fund, which is also known as Fund 32, with a beginning fund balance of approximately 2.9 million, the available funds in 2022 are approximately projected to be 6.7 million. Our projected revenues for 2022 are around 3.8 million. And our major revenue sources are projected grant funding totaling just over $1 million. And that includes a GOCO local grant extension in the amount of $350,000 for Prospect Park Phase Two, the GOCO Resilient Communities Grant that we received in the amount of 162,970 for the fishing dock, which is also part of Prospect Phase Two, a projected GOCO Community Impact Grant in the amount of $350,000 for the replacement of the Panorama tennis courts, and a proposed Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Grant in the amount of $200,000 for Clear Creek Trail improvements. And I just want to mention that if the last two grants are not secured, we will not incur those expenses. Other revenue sources to note are the Jefferson County Open Space Tax in the amount of 1.55 million and Parkland Dedication Fees in the amount of approximately $300,000. So, of that $300,000, 128,000 of which is unrestricted and 171,000 is restricted for transit-oriented development. Also, we, you'll notice in the budget that we've proposed $100,000 for the sale of Town Center Park as we're working with Jefferson County Open Space to remove the reverter from that property and potentially relocate it to the Green at 38th property as will be a long-term lease holder there. And before I jump into the 2022 expenditures, I wanted to provide just an update on a significant project budgeted for 2021. So, we've recently received bids for Phase Two of Prospect Park and will be bringing that information on the successful bidder to an upcoming council meeting for your approval so we can get shovels in the ground ASAP and get moving on that project this year. As a reminder, Phase Two includes the new large pavilion, pickleball courts with lighting and shelter, parking lot improvements, new entry road and entryway signage, a fishing dock, a relocated playground, additional park amenities near the pavilion, and road improvements on the south side of the park for safer access. So, looking at 2022 projected expenditures, they are approximately 5.4 million and include 3.8 million for the Green at 38th. And this project is in collaboration with the Jefferson County School District with the vision of creating a flexible and safe gathering space that can be used for community events, concerts, and festivals, while also providing a physical buffer and separation from school space. And just a quick update on that project. We just held a community meeting on the 15th last Wednesday, providing two unique concepts. And we asked participants to identify the various elements within each concept that they liked and didn't like. And additional engagement is available through What's Up Wheat Ridge through mid-October. So, the next slide. Other projects in the Open Space Fund include, we have 525,000 budgeted for park maintenance projects. The majority of this dollar amount is associated with the GOCO Community Impact Grant that I mentioned previously for post-tension concrete tennis courts at Panorama. And again, if this grant is not awarded, we will not spend these funds. Similarly, the $400,000 in trail maintenance and repair is associated with the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Grant for the Clear Creek Trail improvements. We have 50,000 budgeted to put towards the outdoor fitness court at Panorama Park. We received a grant from the National Fitness Campaign and the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association and are looking for additional sponsorships and/or how we might be able to use American Rescue Plan dollars to complete this project. We have $30,000 budgeted for general open space improvements and 25,000 is budgeted as Wheat Ridge's contribution to the Peaks to Plains Strategic Plan, which addresses the 65-mile Peaks to Plains Trail, 6.8 miles of which are in Wheat Ridge. Other partners on that strategic plan are Adams County, the City of Arvada, Clear Creek County, the City and County of Denver, Jeffco, and the City of Golden and more. Additionally, and lastly, this Open Space Fund budgets, the budget funds nine full-time staff. So, next, we're going to talk about the Conservation Trust Fund. The Conservation Trust Fund, also known as CTF, is a restricted fund also. And per Colorado Constitution, the Conservation Trust Fund receives 40% of the net proceeds of the Colorado Lottery. These funds are distributed on a quarterly per capita basis to municipalities, counties, and other eligible entities for parks, recreation, and open space purposes. CTF funds are used for new projects as well as maintenance projects. So, we have a beginning fund balance of approximately 383,000. And our 2022 projected available funds are approximately 732,000. Our estimated revenues are approximately 351,000. And our estimated expenditures are 368,000. And that includes 187,500 for recreation facility maintenance projects. And in that 187,500, we have, we always reserve 50,000 as a capital reserve fund for emergency repairs. So, that leaves 137,500. And that's earmarked for various improvements to maintain our existing parks and recreation facilities. So, just some examples are the bucket mass replacement at the Recreation Center pool, the replacement of four hot water heaters in the Recreation Center, water slide paint at the Anderson Pool, skimmer leak repairs at the Anderson Pool, diving board stand replacement, and the replacement of two ellipticals in the fitness area. We have $100,000 for playground improvements for April Bacher Park, which we hope to supplement with additional grant funds. And we definitely have community members that are very interested in engaging on that project. $40,000 for park maintenance projects, including various ADA improvements and improvements to the 50th Avenue median. We have 25,000 for general parking lot repairs, 15,000 for various resurfacing projects. And the projected ending fund balance is approximately $364,000. So, now I'll turn it back to Patrick.
Thank you for that, Karen, and thanks for everybody's presentation so far. So, I was gonna, I think we're going to take a quick 10-minute break before we dive into the next piece. It seems as though it's a good breaking point in the slide presentation. So, we'll see you back here in 10 minutes, please.
Thank you, ma'am. We're getting close, almost there, guys. So the 2e bond funds, we've talked about this for the last several years, as you know, and voters approved a temporary half sale, half percent sales tax in 2016 for four projects. And the tax was set to sunset after 12 years or when $38.5 million is raised. Right now, we're projecting that we're going to raise $38.5 million by 2024. So after eight years instead of 12 years. And so the bonds were issued in 2017, $33 million, and basically, all that money pretty much is spent. So this, this fund really only has debt service payments in it for 2022 and a little bit of money for the public art that is required as part of urban renewal projects. So the Wadsworth project, 1% of the budget is supposed to go towards public art. So we have budgeted $384,000 in 2022 and $100,000 in 2023. So a public art project of about, what is that, $484,000? And that would just be, was that just phase one? There would be more for phase two? Or do we budget for the whole thing? I can't remember.
No, I'm sorry.
It's the whole thing.
$1,000 is also phase one.
Yeah. So, so otherwise, all the funds are expended out of this budget. The Wadsworth project now is, all the expenditures are in the CIP budget. So for the next few years, this will just be debt service until the bonds are completely paid off. So now, we kind of want to talk about how this budget, the 2022 budget, that's hard to say, 2022 budget, meets council's priorities and the let's-talk responses that we've been hearing from, from the different neighborhoods and the resident survey that was completed here this last year. So I think I'm going to turn it over, I am, to Ally, and she's going to start with new efforts of engagement, one of council's priorities.
So as you recall, we met back in May, and we talked about, we did a study session topic on this, and you gave us some really good direction on activities that you wanted to see us move forward with. If you remember, we had a list of things we were already doing, and then we sort of had some proposed new activities. So I'm super excited to say that there's money in this budget for those activities that you asked us to move forward with. So a little bit later, I'll talk about a new position request, and that's the GIS technician that we talked about back in May, that's in here. We have budgeted $30,000 for the Demystifying Government Video Series, if you recall us talking about that. Sarah has a really incredible concept I'm very excited about. We talked about the, the old sort of Fraggle Rock, how does a bill become a law, video, right?
Ally, can you hold on one second? I just got a note that the presentation's muted. I don't know if that's Steve's controlling that, or you?
Oh, one second. Hold on. Thanks, Karen. Don't know what we'd do without you doing that. But she's come up with a really great idea that is using a combination of illustration and video to roll out this really kind of fun video series. So we're hiring an illustrator as well as Jesse behind the camera. And we'll come back to you with sort of a list of topics, and she's working on that, but we need the funding appropriated first in order to move forward. So that's exciting. We have put in about $26,000 for either variable or contract staff to, again, support the communications team. We're just getting busier and busier, and there's just a desire for more and more information to be out there in the world, right? So that'll be someone to help with more social media and web updates and sort of pushing out of messaging. $6,000 for the development of the interactive development map, remember we talked about that? $5,000 for the annual Get Involved Mailer. Something I didn't list on the slide, but is in the budget, is $5,000 for the boards and commissions onboarding. So we don't quite know yet what that might look like, but we wanted to allocate some resources to it. And so that's to really get our 72 boards and commission members super trained up, educated, and able to be ambassadors for us outside in the community, as well as helping us, I think, recruit great boards and commission members from across our community. And then finally, we've added some, last year, last year, we added a little bit, to, I think about $2,500, to interpretation services for various public meetings, et cetera. And we've added another $3,500 to that because we've used it. So that's great. So this, you know, this is, this is really exciting. I feel like, I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to make real serious headway in your priority there. The next one I want to chat about is the streamlining the permit process. As you know, we've, Patrick mentioned earlier, we've made some good progress on that. We've put, I'll just call it, we've put $500,000, as you heard, into the equipment replacement fund, shared between a new enterprise resource planning system and also a full police radio replacement that we anticipate happening in the next five years. Is that right, chief? Five years? Yep. So we're saving for that, and we're just about to go out to RFP for the consultant to help us with that project. We've budgeted $25,000 for the Doing Business in Wheat Ridge Guide. So as you recall, that is bringing on someone to help us do surveys and focus groups and really get to the bottom of how our businesses are feeling about our processes and what they're experiencing, and then turning that feedback into, you know, helping us improve our processes, but also really good educational materials to get out there. And then also $2,000 for mailing list data so that we can actually reach not only just business owners, but property owners who might be looking to do something different with their properties for business. And I'll turn it over to Mary Ann.
Thank you, Ally. I'll talk a little bit about us developing solutions to work with our partners to address homelessness. We talked a little bit about the environmental cleanup piece, that's mostly going to be managed by our Parks and Rec staff. The bridge housing piece, you may remember, was originally discussed in May of this year during a city council meeting. And for those who may not remember, bridge housing would support individuals who are in transition into permanent housing, and for those who really just need a little bit of breathing room. So it would typically house individuals who are likely employed, and it would give them a space at a hotel or motel for something like four to 12 weeks and allow them to save money for a new space. Additionally, the Special Populations Court, that takes place the second Thursday of each month, and this is a court that specifically serves our homeless community during this specific time so that our homeless navigator can be there to support them and provide resources, get to know them, do intakes. Additionally, the funding, this funding doubles what we have for 2021, and it really is used to provide food, support. And one of the interesting things that it also does is it provides for services at our municipal judge's discretion for things like mental health evaluations. In addition to these expenditures, the city is participating in regional efforts to address homelessness. Specifically, the county has issued, that RFP Patrick mentioned, for developer to work on two regional navigation centers benefiting all municipalities in the county. We'll keep you updated as this progresses and as funding discussions evolve. There currently is an estimated $6 million gap in initial costs and a $6 million annual operating expense that will be shared among the communities in Jefferson County. Now, pass it over quickly to Ken.
And before Ken starts, I'll just add to that real quickly. You know, the, the ARPA dollars, the American Rescue Plan Act, are specifically, we're still trying to figure out exactly what all the eligible categories are for expenditures, and we mentioned that several times, too. We're using our auditing firm, CLA, to help us with that. But providing housing navigation services and actually housing for homeless populations is definitely one of the categories. And most, most communities in the county are looking at using their dollars for, for some of this, potentially these navigation centers. So we'll come back to you in the future with a proposed spending plan on the $8 million that we're going to receive in ARPA dollars, but that's probably one area that we'll recommend that we, we hold off some of those funds so that when this proposal comes to us, we have the funding available to help out with this. Thanks.
Thanks, Patrick. Just a quick update, maybe, on some of our let's-talk feedback and how that's informing the budget process as well. We're super excited that we continue to get great participation and therefore feedback, which is what we wanted. We've also been clear from the inception of this new resident engagement program that we weren't just going to be listening, that we were going to be taking action, whether that's regulatory change or policy change, things that we can do in that regard, and that's ongoing. And then it's also reflecting itself to some extent in the capital budget. So a couple of just fairly minor items, but important items that we're, we're budgeting, increasing the budget for. So we're increasing the budget for the Neighborhood Cleanup Days, the TLC program. People really like that program, as I think you probably all know. And by throwing not a lot of money at it above what we have in the past, we're going to be able to improve that amount of outreach that people really appreciate. Another budget-related item is for the NTMP. We're, we're including $100,000 in the budget in 2022, is being proposed. Typical years in the recent past have been closer to $25,000, so we think that'll give us the ability, if there's neighborhood desires, to, you know, do a few more of those treatments and potentially do some that are a little more robust, right? So not just speed humps, but perhaps, you know, islands or landscaped islands, things like that. So that's the thinking behind that. I would just echo what Ally said earlier with the GIS technician and the development, the interactive development map. We're definitely hearing in our engagement efforts, and council has been on top of this with some code amendments in regards to things like notice and the radius for notice and the occupant notice that we're making changes in. But that development review map is another tool that we think is really important and responsive to what we're hearing from the let's-talk input. We'll have a more thorough update on that program for you on October 4th at the study session. We're wrapping up our current two neighborhoods, Applewood and Lepple Manor, and we'll be announcing our next two neighborhoods and giving you an overall program update on October 4th.
Thank you, Ken. We're really getting so much good information from our residents this year. And the good news is that many of these programs, services, initiatives that are highlighted as important in the resident survey are also included in city council's priorities, are discussed in let's-talk and other previous discussions with council. So it's all kind of, kind of aligning together. And so this proposed budget does include funding for two new police officers, additional public work staff to shore up our street cleaning program, which was highlighted in our resident survey, funding for homeless services, which, again, prioritized in the resident survey, increased significantly over 2018. It includes a horticulture assistant to support beautification efforts, and also a significant infusion into street repair and parks projects funds. So the new staff members will be discussed in a little bit more detail in the presentation later on, but I really just want to highlight how valuable the survey is for all of us. And that participates, and participation from our residents really does directly impact, you know, how we allocate our funding. So we're really lucky to have such an active community base.
Thank you. Is this okay, Ally? More? Is it better? Just going over our fleet replacement for 2022. The current council-approved fleet replacement policy is based upon the age and mileage slash hours of a particular unit. Old age or high mileage hours does not automatically justify replacement, but instead triggers an investigation into all reasons for replacement, such as high or rising maintenance costs, operating costs, excessive downtime, past useful service, parts are no longer available, overall mechanical, interior, and body condition, accident history. All of these things are put into the equation, and actually, there is a rating chart that I put together years ago, and everything you see on the list that is off the scale, basically with the total points that comprise each of those categories. So in 2022, we have 1.25, 025 million approximately. The highlights of that, I'm not going to go into every vehicle, but the highlights include a new tandem axle dump truck, primarily for our continued snow removal services, an extended cab pickup with plow in the Parks Department, and five patrol vehicles. As I mentioned earlier, we purchased our first electric vehicle this year. We have another one that we're requesting for next year that will go in our engineering department to replace a sedan. And so we're excited about that. Also, I'd just like to point out in future years, in 2023, 24, we're looking at 1.35 million in vehicle replacements. Thanks, Greg.
That was great. Yeah, it's really exciting. It's been fun working through how, you know, just making sure that everything we, you know, that we're sort of touching all the bases of all the things that we've been talking about. It's been a very productive council, and a lot has come up, and just making sure that we're including all of it as requested. So that's been a fun exercise. Just, just to expand just a little bit more on what Patrick was saying about the American Rescue Plan Act funding, we had our kickoff meeting this last week with Clifton Lawson Allen. You're familiar with them. I'm going to say his name because I love it. Jean-Paul Lechevalier is our guy. He's our auditor, but he's also now consulting with us on the use of our ARPA money. And so we, as a reminder, the city will, our allocation of ARPA money is about 7.8 million, a little over 7.8 million. To date, we have received half of that. We will receive the next half next year. You won't see that in here. You won't see the revenue anywhere because what the only revenue that we budget is as we plan to spend it. And at this point, we aren't yet clear, we haven't come to you with a, with a spending plan. And when we do, and when you appropriate those, those funds, we will then recognize the revenue as we spend it. So that's exactly what we did for CARES. Okay? You know, and CARES was designed to help us really respond to the immediate financial impacts of the pandemic, whether that was helping our business community or our own expenditures covering PPE and technology and all those other things. ARPA, the purpose of ARPA is to look more sort of strategically and long-term at the needs of the community. So we, as I said, we just had our first kickoff meeting where we're really relying on CLA to dig into what is still currently out there. It's called the interim final rule, which is hilarious. Think about that as an oxymoron from the US Treasury. It's this massive, massive document and the bill to say, okay, based on the bill, here's what you can do with the money. And it's, it's just, it's really overwhelming, and I'm very
Day of each month, and this is court that specifically serves our homeless community during the specific times that our homeless navigator can be there to support them and provide resources, get to know them, do intakes. Additionally, the funding, this funding doubles what we have for 2021, and it really is used to provide food, support. And one of the interesting things that it also does is it provides for services at our municipal judge's discretion for things like mental health evaluations. In addition to these expenditures, the city is participating in regional efforts to address homelessness. Specifically, the county has issued that RFP Patrick mentioned for developer to work on two regional navigation centers benefiting all municipalities in the county. We'll keep you updated as this progresses and as funding discussions evolve. There currently is an estimated $6 million gap in initial costs and a $6 million annual operating expense that will be shared among the communities in Jefferson County. Now, pass it over quickly to Ken.
And before Ken starts, I'll just add to that real quickly. You know, the ARPA dollars, the American Rescue Plan Act, specifically, we're still trying to figure out exactly what all the eligible categories are for expenditures, and we mentioned that several times, too. We're using our auditing firm, CLA, to help us with that. But providing housing navigation services and actually housing for homeless populations is definitely one of the categories. And most, most communities in the county are looking at using their dollars for, for some of this, potentially these navigation centers. So we'll come back to you in the future with a proposed spending plan on the $8 million that we're going to receive in ARPA dollars. But that's probably one area that we'll recommend that we, we hold off some of those funds so that when this proposal comes to us, we have the funding available to help out with this. Thanks.
Thanks, Patrick. Just a quick update maybe on some of our Let's Talk feedback and how that's informing the budget process as well. We're super excited that we continue to get great participation and therefore feedback, which is what we wanted. We've also been clear from the inception of this new resident engagement program that we weren't just going to be listening, that we were going to be taking action, whether that's regulatory change or policy change, things that we can do in that regard, and that's ongoing. And then it's also reflecting itself to some extent in the capital budget. So a couple of just fairly minor items, but important items that we're budgeting, increasing the budget for. So we're increasing the budget for the neighborhood cleanup days, the TLC program. People really like that program, as I think you probably all know. And by throwing not a lot of money at it above what we have in the past, we're going to be able to improve that amount of outreach that people really appreciate. Another budget-related item is for the NTMP. We're including $100,000 in the budget in 2022, is being proposed. Typical years in the recent past have been closer to 25,000, so we think that'll give us the ability, if there's neighborhood desires, to, you know, do a few more of those treatments and potentially do some that are a little more robust, right? So not just beat homes, but perhaps, you know, islands or landscaped islands, things like that. So that's the thinking behind that. I would just echo what Ally said earlier with the GIS technician and the development, the interactive development map. We're definitely hearing in our engagement efforts, and council has been on top of this with some code amendments in regards to things like notice and the radius for notice and the occupant notice that we're making changes in. But that development review map is another tool that we think is really important and responsive to what we're hearing from the Let's Talk input. We'll have a more thorough update on that program for you on October 4th at the study session. We're wrapping up our current two neighborhoods, Applewood and Lepple Manor, and we'll be announcing our next two neighborhoods and giving you an overall program update on October 4th.
Thank you, Ken. We're really getting so much good information from our residents this year. And the good news is that many of these programs, services, initiatives that are highlighted as important in the resident survey are also included in city council's priorities, are discussed in Let's Talk and other previous discussions with council. So it's all kind of, kind of aligning together. And so this proposed budget does include funding for two new police officers, additional public work staff to shore up our street cleaning program, which was highlighted in our resident survey, funding for homeless services, which again prioritized in the resident survey, increased significantly over 2018. It includes a horticulture assistant to support beautification efforts and also a significant infusion into street repair and parks projects funds. So the new staff members will be discussed in a little bit more detail in the presentation later on, but I really just want to highlight how valuable the survey is for all of us. And that participates in, participation from our residents really does directly impact, you know, how we allocate our funding. So we're really lucky to have such an active community base.
Is this okay, Ally? More? Is it better? Just going over our fleet replacement for 2022. The current council-approved fleet replacement policy is based upon the age and mileage slash hours of a particular unit. Old age or high mileage hours does not automatically justify replacement, but instead triggers an investigation into all reasons for replacement, such as high or rising maintenance costs, operating costs, excessive downtime, past useful service, parts are no longer available, overall mechanical, interior and body condition, accident history. All of these things are put into the equation, and actually there is a rating chart that I put together years ago, and everything you see on the list that is off the scale, basically with the total points that comprise each of those categories. So in 2022, we have 1.25, 025 million approximately. The highlights of that, I'm not going to go into every vehicle, but the highlights include a new tandem axle dump truck primarily for our continued snow removal services, an extended cab pickup with plow in the Parks Department, and five patrol vehicles. As I mentioned earlier, we purchased our first electric vehicle this year. We have another one that we're requesting for next year that will go in our engineering department to replace a sedan. And so we're excited about that. Also, I'd just like to point out in future years, in 2324, we're looking at 1.35 million in vehicle replacements.
That was great. Yeah, it's really exciting. It's been fun working through how, you know, just making sure that everything we, you know, that we're sort of touching all the bases of all the things that we've been talking about. It's been a very productive council, and a lot has come up, and just making sure that we're including all of it as requested. So that's been a fun exercise. Just, just to expand just a little bit more on what Patrick was saying about the American Rescue Plan Act funding. We had our kickoff meeting this last week with Clifton Los and Allen. You're familiar with them. I'm going to say his name because I love it. Jean-Paul Lechevalier is our guy. He's our auditor, but he's also now consulting with us on the use of our ARPA money. And so we, as a reminder, the city will, our allocation of ARPA money is about 7.8 million, a little over 7.8 million. To date, we have received half of that. We will receive the next half next year. You won't see that in here. You won't see the revenue anywhere because what, the only revenue that we budget is as we plan to spend it. And at this point, we aren't yet clear, we haven't come to you with a, with a spending plan. And when we do, and when you appropriate those, those funds, we will then recognize the revenue as we spend it. So that's exactly what we did for CARES. Okay? You know, and CARES was designed to help us really respond to the immediate financial impacts of the pandemic, whether that was helping our, our business community or our own expenditures covering PPE and technology and all those other things. ARPA, the purpose of ARPA is to look more sort of strategically and long-term at the needs of the community. So we, as I said, we just had our first kickoff meeting where we're really relying on CLA to dig into what is still currently out there. It's called the interim final rule, which is hilarious. Think about that as an oxymoron from the US Treasury. It's this massive, massive document and the bill to say, okay, based on the bill, here's what you can do with the money. And it's, it's just, it's really overwhelming. And I'm very, I'm very grateful that we, that we're going to use actually a little portion of this funding to have CLA help us. We have until 2024 to commit all the money, until 2026 to spend it, the end of each year there, to spend the money. It's a really big deal. We don't want to get to 2024 or 2026 and realize that we aren't aligned somehow with the legislation. And so CLA is going to help us with that. So we will include it in this budget. You can see in 2021, we're estimating 178,000 for, you know, this year's expenses. That includes, we did a vaccine incentive program for staff that has a value attached to it, technology, additional sanitation. And next year is, is very similar. That's kind of what that, that 178 and 308, and the 308 next year does include some homeless, some new homeless services as well. So we will, we'll work with CLA, and I think Patrick's plan is that we come back to you with, with a, with a proposal, a recommendation on how to allocate this funding and work with you to sort of solidify that plan and then implement it. But we have some time. So now we will roll into staffing and benefits, which is sort of another big exciting section of our budget. So as we look at just a little bit of the history from 2019 through the proposed 2022, as you recall, back in 21, our original budget, we didn't come to you with any staffing requests. And again, we held off on filling existing authorized positions. However, in 2021, you very kindly approved the mid-year, the wish list, which did include some new positions. So you approved 6.25 new positions in 2021. And as a reminder, those, that was the licensing technician, whose focus, of course, is short-term rentals, will be hotel licensing when we get there, tobacco retailing, massage, and just backing up our very, very busy sales and business licensing. And I think a lot of you know that we did lose Carol Crawford back in June, very suddenly. And I'm very grateful that we had Megan in place and trained. She trained with Carol through the pandemic to be able to back her up. So we miss Carol greatly, but we're very, we're also very grateful to have Megan. A plans reviewer, an inspector in community development, you approved two new police offices, you upgraded the sustainability coordinator full-time, and then there was an additional, it was, it didn't require funding this year, but there was an additional 1.75 FTE in the court martial program, if you remember that. So that was upgrading two part-time court marshals to three full-time court marshals. And Kirsten is crazy busy trying to recruit right now. It's a real hard position, hard to recruit position. This new budget, the 2022 proposed budget, requests an additional 8.37 positions in full-time employees, and we'll discuss those by department now, and I'll go first as I have the mic. So this is our little map for admin services. We call ourselves Base Camp. I don't know if I've told you all that recently. That's what we are. We're Base Camp. We're here to help everybody else get to the top. But we have two positions in admin services that we are requesting for 2022. And the first is a GIS technician. So we met on May 3rd. We presented a work plan to you all. A big part of that is, that was for the sort of better, more, you know, more education and information out to the community. And a big part of that was this interactive development map that Ken just touched on as well. And we really need this position in order to be able to fulfill that activity. In addition to that, they'll do all kinds of other things. We currently actually have an intern that we budget about 22,000 a year for, and we'll reallocate that funding to this position. So it's not all new money. We won't need, luckily, we have a seat for them, too, right, Ken? Because of that? So we have a little space issue here. We're working on space. So that's our first request, is the GIS technician. And I know, Councilor Weaver, that it's very important to you as well, that expanding and really using the resources, here in Wheat Ridge, we're, we're scratching the surface on what we can truly do with, with that, with that program. The next position is an accounting supervisor, and this is a time-limited position. We're requesting this position for three years. This position will report to Mark Colvin, who you met recently, our finance manager. With Wadsworth and with the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Projects comes a lot of work for accounting. We've actually been using a consultant to help us because frankly, we've talked about this, that, that team is extremely lean, and we need help project accounting. Wadsworth only works for the city if we turn around, grant reimbursements quickly to CDOT. We spend the money, we turn them in, we turn in the grant reimbursement requests, and then we get, we get, we get our funding. So we are requesting this accounting supervisor for three years. We want to see how it goes. We want to have them spend half of their time project accounting and half of their time managing the frontline staff, that allowing then the finance manager to spend more time on quality control, auditing, financial reporting. It's a really big lift. When we may take the budget up to 82 million with all these capital projects, there's a huge impact on finance. So thanks for considering that. And now I'll turn it over to Karen to talk about, to talk about Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Ally. So Mary Ann talked about beautification as it related to the resident survey, and the first position that we have here definitely plays a role in that. So our existing horticulture team is small but mighty. We have one horticulture technician and one horticulture assistant responsible for maintaining the flower beds and shrubs on all city property, as well as Happiness Gardens. And it's really been difficult for two employees to keep up with the demand, especially with the increased time commitment required at Happiness Gardens as a result of our growing regenerative agriculture program. So additionally, we're looking to focus on the beautification on the 38th Avenue quarter in '22, and with more vibrant flower plantings. Therefore, there's truly a need to add a team member to assist with the city beautification efforts. The next position that we want to talk about is the graphic designer. So within the Parks and Recreation Department, we currently employ a 30-hour-per-week graphic designer to serve the professional communication needs of our department. And we're seeking a full-time position for a variety of reasons. A primary reason is to attract and retain talent. It's difficult to retain quality variable, and that's what we call part-time employees in this market. But equally as important is that we simply have more than 30 hours of a week work to accomplish in order to support both council and departmental priorities. And another thing that's important to note with this particular position is if approved, this position will spend a few hours per week supporting citywide graphic design needs, which will save money on consulting services. And if approved, the amount that we've budgeted for the 30-hour variable role would be removed from the budget. And our final request is upgrading a recreation coordinator position at the Active Adult Center. She's a benefited 25-hour position to a full-time position. And this change would allow for additional programming at the Active Adult Center to better serve the older adults in Wheat Ridge. On a negative, one negative impact from the pandemic was we lost a lot of volunteer drivers. So upgrading this position to full-time would help supplement our trip program as well, ensuring that trips won't need to be canceled due to a shortage of drivers. And without this position, revenue may decrease as a result of canceling programs. And I think it's on to the chief.
We're requesting two full-time police officers. The short answer is with the expansion of Clear Creek Crossing, that's more geography for us to cover. The longer answer is we took a deep look at our department, and we've seen a lot of impact from some of the legislation, some of the workload that we have, which extends officers' call times. Some of our lower-level calls as much as double the amount of time from 30 minutes to 60 minutes per call. So with that kind of increase, and we're seeing that because reporting, body worn camera tagging and things of that nature, it really is taking a bite out of our discretionary time and our ability to create relationships in the community. So the addition of these officers is, is one step closer to alleviating some of those pressures, but we are looking at other options to try and address those issues.
Public Works Department is requesting two positions. One is a maintenance worker, two. The primary reason for this, it supports the city's attractive and inviting city, great neighborhoods, and economically viable commercial areas by providing the additional labor needed to sustain established but strained high service levels for maintenance of the, of citywide graffiti removal, asphalt patching, snow and ice control, street sweeping, and storm sewer cleaning, as well as traffic sign and signal repair and maintenance services. Also, with the opening of the Clear Creek Crossing development and transit-oriented developments, demand levels for these maintenance services are further increased. And I would just also add that we're getting, with these developments, which is good for Wheat Ridge, we're getting more and more city-owned street and pedestrian lighting that we maintain and repair. The second position, which I want to go into a little more detail about because it's pretty critical, is a public works utility locate technician. This position can be viewed as supportive of the city's strategic initiatives, and this position is needed to meet the ongoing and increasing locate requests and requirements through the Colorado Utility Locate System, or Colorado 811. This takes a proactive approach to mitigate potential financial and legal liability to the city from an ineffective utility locate response system. The Colorado 811 system is detailed and is the communication link between the utility owners, the city of Wheat Ridge in this case, and excavators to protect underground facilities related to excavation. Just briefly, once a locate request is received, it is a utility owner's responsibility to respond in as timely a manner as possible to accurately locate respective city-owned utilities such as storm sewer and electrical conduits for traffic signals, and again, city-owned street lighting. There has been a substantial increase in demand for respective utility locates from 4,158 in 2019, this is to the city of Wheat Ridge, to 6,369 in COVID year 2020. As of May of '21, there have been 2,877 locate requests, and that's coming from the slow part of the year. We're in the really busy part of the year now, so I'm sure it's at least doubled that. This averages out to about 240 requests per month that one person currently is doing, and our department has taken the initiative to respond to this. This position also requires ongoing coordination with IT's GIS technicians and knowledge of the city's GIS system for ongoing input of various city-owned utilities.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, that's, you don't actually have that position right now, so it's incredible that you're accomplishing all of that. I just want to touch a little bit on employee compensation and benefits. So that's, that's all the positions. That's the 8.37 positions. And we'll just talk a bit now about compensation and benefits for next year. So one of the biggest challenges we're experiencing at the moment is the labor shortage and the, the sort of the great resignation that's affecting employers across the country. And our turnover rate so far in 2021 is double what it was at this point last year. And people definitely decided to stay put last year. I think maybe people that were thinking about retiring weren't sure if they could afford to anymore and held off a little bit. But, you know, some are choosing to retire, some are choosing to switch careers. We're seeing that, especially in law enforcement. Some are terminated for cause more than usual. It's interesting, when you emerge from something like this, what happens in your personnel base. And others have just emerged from the pandemic, seeking different opportunities, like Denita, who we miss. We're currently in a very competitive recruiting market, and so it's important that our comp strategy is in really good shape. So we usually perform a market, a wage market analysis every two years, and we were due to complete that in 2020, but we held off, obviously, because of the pandemic. The market analysis often results in pay ranges increasing for the next budget year, so we froze it. This was a, so we did complete it this year in 2021. It just wrapped up about a month ago. This is a consultant-led effort. They use market data from around the front range. They reviewed every single position in the city. They looked at benchmark data from, again, around the front, the front range. They made sure that the classifications were good. There were a couple of changes in our pay plan. Some positions went up, a couple went down. And again, that's all analytical work that our consultant does for us, which is great. But all, all pay grades for 2022 increased. In order for us to stay competitive, we need to increase all of our pay grades in 2022, and especially in this really challenging labor market. And with that, approximately a million dollars is included in this budget for pay-for-performance increases. And Patrick's budget message, the city manager's budget message goes into our comp strategy. I won't review it all here in terms of what our pay-for-performance program is all about. I'm happy to answer questions. Office of staff increases, and then market and equity adjustments. So that million covers all of that. Not, not all employees receive a market or equity adjustment, just those who fall below the new minimum of a pay grade. So most employees in Wheat Ridge only receive an increase that corresponds with their performance, their performance rating. Some employees will also receive a market adjustment, which brings them up to, which brings them into their, the new pay grade because they'd be below it otherwise. A significant portion of this is actually for part-time employees and also impacts to full-time employees because the, you know, the competition for part-time employees is so fierce that those wages have increased. So this budget also includes the 0.5% increase for sworn pension. If you remember, this is the third of three years where we wanted to increase the city's contribution to our sworn members pension plan. It was at 10%. We were below market back in 2019 when we did this analysis. And so we've increased it 0.5% each year, and in 2022, that's the, the final. And at that point, I think we'd be wise to go back out and look again and make sure that we're still competitive. Or, you know, perhaps we need to talk about doing more. That equals about $36,000. And then finally, last year, we actually saw a decrease in our medical premiums, which is pretty unheard of. Well, this next year, we are going to see a small increase of about 3%, and that's due to our exceptional ongoing claims loss ratio. We're in really good shape. Our wellness programs contribute to that a great deal. So that's our comp, and I'll turn it back to Patrick. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ally. And okay, wrapping up here, just a couple more slides. Just want to look ahead a little bit and look at some of the short-term and long-term fiscal opportunities and challenges that we see coming up. And we'll start with the good things, the opportunities first. You know, we have numerous redevelopment projects still going on around the city, and, and the corners at Wheat Ridge, 38th and Wadsworth, unfortunately, you know, Lucky's filed bankruptcy several years ago, and that, that building has been vacant ever since. But the developer and owner of that site is actively working and hopefully is close to a contract with a new tenant that would generate significant amount of sales tax for that center in the city. So just waiting to hear about that, so hopefully that comes soon. The apartments there, the Edison, they received their CO several weeks ago, so they are moving in residence as we speak. So that's going to increase the activity in that area, which will increase the sales at a lot of those, those local stores there. Clear Creek Crossing, we don't, we have minimal amount of revenues in the 2022 budget from Clear Creek Crossing, from the Come and Go Convenience Store at this point. That's the only thing we've projected revenues, but that's going to build out that's, that development over the next several years, hopefully, and will continue to degenerate revenues. I believe we were looking at over a million, a million eight a year, once that development is fully built out of new revenues. We, I already mentioned that, that the metro district out there will be reimbursing the city, hopefully this year, about 10.5 million. The Wheat Ridge Ward Station, you heard about the development going on up there. Right now, it's been primarily residential development, many units going in there. Hopefully, people start riding the train again, and we start seeing potential more activity with some commercial development potentially up in that area. Kipling Ridge, this is the Sprouts Shopping Center on, on 38th and Kipling. There still is one vacant parcel on that site that was sold to, to a third party, and they, I think they are going to have, they have plans for a multi-tenant building that will generate some sales tax, hopefully. But the good news with Kipling Ridge is the, the TIF agreement is, is about done, and the loan will be paid off, I believe, next year is the last payment for that project. And so all the sales tax that's been coming off that center has been going to the Urban and Middle Authority to finance that, or to finance. and Middle Authority to finance that or to pay for that loan. And that's about $500,000 a year. So once that loan's paid off, that sales tax will come back to the general fund. So we'll have 500,000 more general fund dollars to play with in the, in the next year or so. The ridge at 38, the, there's tremendous amount of activity along 38th Avenue. A lot of it hasn't kicked off yet, but there's a lot of projects in, in the works, new brew pubs, new restaurants. The new apartments at 38th and Upham did sell to a new owner several months ago and we met with them and they're committed to building out the retail portion in the, in the bottom. I think they, they're, they have a lot of interest from some restaurants and so hopefully we'll see some new restaurants fill those spaces soon. The Minnesota, as I mentioned earlier, the municipal bond market is really, really good right now and it's, it's a good time to, to borrow money. It's really cheap still. I'm not sure how much longer that's going to last, but we mentioned the Wheat Ridge, renewal Wheat Ridge bonds that they're going to be issuing. It's going to help us get a lot of capital projects done in the city. And also mentioned that the 2E bonds that the city issued several years ago, that sales tax will generate potentially 38 and a half million by 2024. So that temporary sales tax increase will go away. My recommendation to city council is that we seriously consider asking the voters to extend that for another period of time and come up with four or five other large capital projects across the city that we would like to get done. And so that's a, that's a huge opportunity for the community to get some large projects done with a sales tax increase as such as that. Some short term challenges, fiscal challenges that we're looking at, this is, we've talked about this a lot tonight, but labor shortage, supply chain issues, inflation is ticking up and we're, you know, some of these things could continue to have an impact on the community. You know, the, the chief and I have been, are going to continue having some conversations about staffing police services. And he wants to have some serious conversations about how we potentially may have to shift some of those services to civilian employees such as traffic investigation. Do you really need a sworn position to be doing that type of work? It's, it's becoming harder and harder potentially to hire sworn officers. So maybe there, we need to make a shift in even some of our policing services. So we'll be looking at that. You know, we mentioned it's, it's been very difficult to hire part time employees for lifeguards, seasonal workers, park workers. So it's been more and more difficult for Karen and her crew to, to keep up with, with things and keep pools open. So those, those are still challenges we're concerned about. You know, we're, we're struggling getting equipment in. We're still waiting for police patrol vehicles that we ordered. How long ago Greg? Beginning of, in, or in 2020 or even, we're still waiting for some vehicles we ordered in 2020. There's just shortages of equipment and chips that go in, into the vehicles. And there's, other, other supply, supply chain issues, we're seeing issues with asphalt. And you know, we're going to be starting the Wadsworth construction project very soon. That's eventually going to be concrete, so we don't have to worry about that. But the temporary, some of the temporary roads are going to be asphalt and they were, I think requiring appointments or reservations this last year to get asphalt before you just kind of went and got it. And then they even stopped, I think, early this year because of, of supply chain issues. Gas prices are escalating. Greg mentioned the other day that we're going to be probably 60,000 short this year for budget for gas. If y'all fill up, you noticed it's four, you know, it's over $4 a gallon in some places. So those are some of the short term fiscal challenges we're seeing. Some of the more of the long term fiscal challenges, you know, it's, it's pandemic related, how much, you know, what's the uncertainty with pandemic? What's it going to do with our fiscal situation on a federal level? Will this labor shortage continue? Will prices continue to rise? The supply chain issue? Can we get the, the materials, equipment we need to provide the services to our constituents? Funding for phase two of Wadsworth, as you all know, we're phasing that. We have asked Congress, we asked Congressman Pearl Mutter's office and our two senators' office for $10 million for the phase two. Fortunately, because of a late minute grant we got from, through CDOT, was it CDOT or Dr. Cog, to do a couple more add alternates during phase one. We, we believe phase two is only going to be about $8 million now, but if we don't get the funding through a transportation bill or through Congress, we'll have to use some of our other funding sources for that. Police liability issues are, it's a huge concern across the country, across the nation. We were told this year that, or for next year's budget, we should anticipate a 50% increase in our liability insurance mainly because of police liability issues. So we did that, we plugged that number in and we just got our quote a few weeks, a week or so ago and it didn't materialize into 50%. I can't remember how much of an increase it was. So actually we have, we got a little bit more in the budget than we need for that insurance. But there's talk about excess insurance carriers not, not covering cities anymore for police liability type issues in the future. So just because of obviously what, what's going on around the country. Inadequacies of our municipal facilities, we talked about this a lot. We, we make do with what we have, but they're, they're just continuing to age all of our buildings, not just City Hall here, but I'm embarrassed at the condition of, of some of our, our facilities for our public works and parks employees. They really need to be improved. You know, kind of a big one, this is a little kind of vague, but not so vague. It doesn't necessarily equate exactly to fiscal challenge, but the lack of trust in government is, is continuing and it's getting closer to local government, which is sad. You know, how much longer is our government, is our residents and constituents going to trust us as the local government to support any future bond issuances or tax increases that we may need? So I think we do a pretty good job here in Wheat Ridge with that, but it seems to be changing unfortunately. So with that, I want to turn it over real quickly to Ally. We'll talk about the future, the rest of the budget process and then we'll open it up for questions.
Just to recap, the opportunities for public comment this budget season. You all had presentations from the outside or you had, you heard recommendations from the outside agency review group back on July 19th. That money's included in the budget. We had public input opportunities on July 26th and August 23rd. Obviously anyone can comment anytime, but we called them out specifically. We didn't receive any feedback. However, we did launch a What's Up Wheat Ridge project page this year for the first time. We wanted to dip our toe in the water with the budget process. Something this big, if it doesn't affect people exactly where they live or they can't make that connection, you don't necessarily get a lot of feedback, but I'm pretty happy with the initial results from year one on that. So to report on that, we, the site received over 200, received exactly 278 visits. So that's cool. And of those, 93 are considered what bang the table calls informed because they actually visited multiple elements of the budget process site and downloaded a document. So for example, Karen had the service level continuum spectrum on there or maybe last year's, this year's budget in brief. So some, you know, a number of those, almost 100 of those folks decided to really sort of dig, dig a little deeper and educate themselves. And then 14 visitors actually contributed to, to an idea or took the survey. So again, for year one, I'm pretty happy that we got a little bit more feedback than we normally would. We asked residents for ideas on, based on the, on the resident survey, specifically what it means about wanting more programming for youth. And there was a comment about potentially offering some free services and at the rec center. And the other was focusing on beautification. How can we attract our, improve our physical attractiveness? And the, the focus on comments there was on commercial corridors, which is one of your priorities anyway, and then planting more trees, which as you know, is an area of focus here in the city. So good news all around there. The, our partners made their presentations to you on August 16th. And just as a reminder, you provided consensus to move forward with 390,000 for local works, 90,000 for the Wheat Ridge Business District and 125,000 for the Conation Festival. And all three of those are indeed included in the proposed 2022 budget. So here's what we're looking for from you. We're looking for consensus this evening on the 2022 proposed budget. And then our goal is to bring this back to you all formally for public hearing and adoption on October 11th. We'll also ask you to certify our property tax mill, property tax mill levy. It does get harder as it gets later. It's like a tongue twister. We'll ask you to do that that same night. So that's our goal, based on the discussion this evening, is to come back to you on October 11th. And with that, Mayor Protem, we are done. And I'm going to shut off the presentation so we can look at Karen on the screen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick and Directors in Chief for your presentation. I'm sure council has several questions. I'm going to ask though, that when you have your questions, if you would keep it to two questions each, one redirect on your question if you need to redirect and then we can get, everybody can get a chance and then we'll come back around for extra questions. And so I'd like to see who would like to start.
I just wanted to know a couple of things about the, what we do know about the CARES dollars. I think I read this, but I did a lot of reading and so I might be forgetting. Do we have to spend down those dollars by a certain point?
2026.
Okay. And then my second question is also about that. Can we use that money to fund positions? Do we know that yet?
We don't know 100% yet, but there, there is some language that talks about feeling positions that maybe were left vacant during the pandemic and especially if they focus on COVID response. Ally may know a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, I just say that, that it's funny. ARPA is in some ways broader than CARES and in some ways more restrictive than CARES. And one of the very specific areas they said is more restrictive is payroll. So if you remember, we used a chunk of our CARES money for actually public safety payroll, which was by the end of the, working through all the guidance, six months really after it came out, it was, you know, that, that was sort of a given. You could do that. It's very specific. You cannot do that here. And I believe that yes, the personnel, it has to be at least 50% of the time of the position has to be related somehow, some way to the pandemic. And I'll tell you, that's very challenging for us now, to do now, at least, at least today. There isn't, I don't think there's anyone in the city that is spending more than 50% of their time.
But I think the good news is if any of these positions, if they get approved, when this budget is adopted and we find out if we're, if it's clarified later down the road, I think we, we can retro it back. Any, any expense after March of this year, March 10th or 3rd, March 3rd is eligible to be reimbursed. So if we get better clarification about how the monies can get spent, even if it's a year out, we can go all the way back to March of this year to, to reimburse. So the money would basically just go into the city's, in the general fund and to cover those expenses.
Okay. The reason I was asking was just if we were going to use that, use those funds for homelessness, whatever that might be, if there was opportunity to fund positions. So thank you.
Councilwoman Hulteen.
Thank you. So before questions, I do just want to thank you. That was actually the best budget presentation that I have sat through since I've started watching them. It was incredibly informative and helpful and useful, so thank you for that. And I just happened to notice the correlation of dates of when you were, going back to 2012 is when I started paying attention to the city budget. Yeah. And I also just want to thank you because tonight and, and reading through this really reinforced what a good job was done last year in our budgeting. And I'm just really proud that we're able to accomplish so much while being very conservative and then being able to have these wish lists. So my first question has to do with wish listing. When the $10 million comes in plus the potential of $500,000, can you just speak to the process that we can expect for looking at those unrestricted funds and what type of, you know, big projects, small projects, how, how that process will unfold between staff and coming to council for us to consider because it's pretty significant?
Yeah, it, no, it's very significant and of course, we want your direction on that. And we've been meeting as a staff. It's, we have these presentations with, with these slides, with all these buckets of money because it's, it's pretty strange. I mean, this, this is a very unique time in, in government. I don't think we're ever going to see this again where we have this many resources coming. And it's not just from the federal government. It's, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of business type development revenues coming in too. So some, some are restricted, some aren't, right? So this money that you mentioned, that you're talking about the reimbursement from Clear Creek Crossing, right? Those will be less restricted, but the ARPA funds are more restricted. The Wheat Ridge renewal bond funds are restricted only to I-70 Kipling Corridor. If the city wants to do a, a new bond in a couple of years, those will be restricted to some projects you choose. So we're trying to be very, very strategic on making sure that we get the best bang for our dollars and we're not, we're spending the dollars wisely. So yes, we've been having staff discussions and just kind of putting list of, of unfunded projects together with the intent of coming back to council when needed to figure out how to spend those. And the good thing with ARPA, we have time to do that. We have time to, to get the clarification on how those dollars can be spent. And then even with the Clear Creek Crossing reimbursement, we have time for that. You know, we believe as staff, we understand what some of the priorities of council are for sure. You know, we, we believe Wadsworth is, is a priority and we don't have phase two funded. So we're trying to figure out where, which bucket of money is, will fund phase two if we don't get these grant dollars from, from Congress, right? And we don't know if we're not, we're going to get that yet or not. So there's a lot of timing issues and, and rules that we have to kind of work through. But when we get to a point where we need to make decision, it'll come back to council and we'll have recommendations and get your feedback and, and, but we want to make sure we have the best information and knowledge before we come back to you and to make those decisions, so we don't make the wrong decision.
Okay, great. Thank you. And it's an exciting problem to be anticipating. So my second question's a little bit more in the weeds and then I'll, we'll wait till it comes back around for other questions. But I was looking through here and it looks like there's some money budgeted for bike lanes on Harlan to go alongside some resurfacing that's planned for there. And one of the priorities that came out of the Let's Talk Wheat Ridge was a pretty strong preference to be moving forward with finally getting the 35th Avenue bike lanes. And I'm just curious if there is a plan next year to actually get that planning process initiated and have that priority move forward.
Yes, we certainly heard in the East Wheat Ridge neighborhood that that was a priority to further explore that and we're, we're doing that. We're, it, it isn't in the budget directly because we're going to do the design process with in-house staff. So both from a design and public outreach standpoint, we plan on doing that with our, our team. We haven't mapped out a schedule yet, but that's the plan, that it's a priority for 2022 to get that process started and get a design in place. Based on what that design looks like and what we estimate would be the cost, then it will have to explore a couple of different options for how, when and how we'd fund it, whether that would be a 2022 supplemental or whether we could, you know, take, if it's, if it's adequate to take funds from that MTMP or something like that. But we can explore a variety of different options when it comes to the actual capital costs.
Great, thank you. Councilman States, please.
Thank you. An excellent presentation tonight. That was very informative and answered most of the questions that I had. It was mentioned a few times and it was mentioned by you, Patrick, as far as long term challenges, inadequate facilities. At what point do we start thinking about adding more facilities or are we there yet? Or where are you at as far as that goes?
Yeah, great question. And this kind of came up, I think, at one of our last council meetings. And I saw a lot of head nodding from you guys, which was encouraging. I think it came up during the Lutheran master, Lutheran Legacy Campus discussion and update. You know, we, we are seriously thinking about, or at least I am, and I know staff is, and I know the mayor is about, you know, what, what's the possibilities of the Lutheran campus for some expansion of, of facilities for the city? And not just municipal facilities, but some, some type of combination of a civic, you know, type use with including, you know, libraries and cultural centers and different things that the community might want. You know, we do have money budgeted in the out years of a capital budget to do some improvements to the parks and rec facilities, the, the building on Field at the building on Field at Anderson Park. A lot of that we're doing in, I don't know if Karen is still, Karen's still up there, I think? Yeah. They have some ideas of making that building a little bit more habitable. And then Greg, the public workshops, I can't remember. We do have money budgeted in the out-year too, I think, to look at additional plans. Years ago, we had a master plan for the public workshops area to combine public works and Parks operations all onto that same campus, if you will. We did a few things. We added a couple of new buildings, but it didn't get much further. So Greg, do you have anything, or Karen, you want to add to that?
I can't tell if, I'm sorry. I was going to say, I can't tell if Greg is being...
Yeah, like you said, we have a master plan, and I believe that was dated back to 2004. And Parks was able to put in a few buildings, fortunately, to store their vehicles in. And Phase 1 of that plan was to construct an admin building to combine Parks and Public Works in that building. And at this point, it would probably mean redoing the master plan because of what's been done and what we'd need to do based on today's needs, and more equipment and more people that we have.
Karen?
Yeah, I would just add to that with the Parks Forestry and Open Space Building that's on 44th over by Anderson Park. They don't have a very desirable office space. There's no windows. And it's just kind of a sad place to office out of. So we're just looking to do at least some temporary upgrades to that facility to make it a more enjoyable workspace for folks.
But I do think the Lutheran Campus Master Plan is really the impetus for looking at at least replacement of this facility or expansion of this facility. Or, you know, I think there's all kinds of options available. Do we keep this building and for some services and move some to the Lutheran Campus? Or, but, so I'm anxious for that process to come out and maybe start those conversations.
Councilwoman Hutchinson?
Thank you. I just have a question about the Green on 38th. I went to the meeting on Wednesday, and I thought I understood that the amount of money for this was 3.2 million, and five days later, it's 3.8 million? Is, am I incorrect?
I can just speak to that, Judy. I misspoke at the public meeting. My apologies.
Oh, okay. All right, I have another question. That's about the TLC cleanup days. I thought local works put those on. Don't they pay for that? Why is the city paying $10,000?
That, we're, I'll let the chief maybe speak to that. But we're proposing to expand the Dumpster Day programs and keep that money in the general fund budget. There's always been such a discussion and argument, if you will, of decreasing local works budgets. So it's a city priority, the Dumpster Day programs. And local works did originally manage those in cooperation with the Police Department. But the expansion of those to provide longer hours or additional days or more dumpsters, we're proposing to add more money into the city's general fund to expand those programs, since they're so popular. But Chief, did you want to add what's the Police Department's role in the TLC?
Yeah, we generally tend, we tend to, we provide a lot of the people power to those events and the advertisement of those. We do that through our Public Information Office. And then we do work to contract some of those dumpsters and make sure that we have an adequate supply of those. So I think I mentioned earlier in a rambling speech, but we had 70 dumpsters last year, and I think it's overwhelmingly popular, and we're just looking to expand that. It's already budgeted to some extent, I think. Mr. Goff, can you comment on that? This is just, this is just taking a popular program that's really getting to the point where we would have to shut people out if we don't expand it, I think, is really where we're at.
Yeah, thank you. It's the most wonderful program, seriously. It's so great. But if it's a city program, then just say it's a city program and not local works, is what I was always thinking it was.
Councilwoman Hutchinson, I can just, we can maybe just further clarify. If you look at the local works budget, which is the last page here, that $37,000 that they had originally allocated is still there. So it's predominantly, it's local works that's, I think, really managing and operationalizing this program. They still have $37,000 there. But they made a commitment to you all that they were going to reduce their budget, right? And then we came back and said, but wait, we want to add, you know, we want to add another $10,000. And there's a real conflict there, a real tension there. And so that's why we just budgeted it, the additional money separately. But it's still really, I think...
Yeah, and I mean, and local works is an extension of the city, so it is a city program. It's just local works is our partner that helps us manage it. So it's, you know, it's still, you can still say it's a city program. Just local works, our partner, helps us manage it.
Councilmember Urban, and then Councilwoman Weaver.
Thank you. What's the status of the Wadsworth Town Center Subarea Plan? And how does that get incorporated into next year's budget? Or do we have anything for that? There was a mention of the park being sold and then transferred over to the Green. But I guess just as it relates to the subarea plan, do we have any plans for that?
Yeah, I don't know if we had a, I can speak to the Town Center Park a little bit. But, and I think you did bring up, I think, this in another meeting, didn't you, Mr. Urban? Maybe in the retreat or something?
Well, in the retreat, and then it was also a priority that was filtered out of that, that said that the Town Center Subarea Plan would be a quote-unquote priority. But I don't know where that is.
Yeah, I don't think it raised to the, to the, your top eight. So it's not on our current plan unless I'm, I remember the discussion, yeah. But it's not, it's, there's nothing in the budget for it. The Town Center Park, you know, has been really inactive park for many years now. And the fountain stopped working many years ago, and we can never get it fixed. And it became a site for nuisance more than anything. And we fenced it off during COVID. And, you know, our thought is, if we are going to move forward with the Green, that we would decommission that park. And Karen's been working with Open Space, and they, I think, are supportive of removing the reverter and putting it on the Green. But, but yeah, I don't know if I'm answering your question on the Town Center Subarea Plan, though we don't have anything planned for that.
I guess we don't really have anything planned for that. And they are sort of tied together with the Green in that we have a lot of lessons we need to learn from the Town Center Park. It's vacant. It's not working. These are all things that we'll be lamenting about the Green 10 years from now, if we're not careful. Because the homeless issue, the rundown nature of it, the fact that it isn't our property, these are all issues that I think we're going to have with the Green. So that would be my only concern with this budget, is spending money on a property we don't own. Even though we have a lease on it, it just concerns me.
Councilwoman Weaver?
Thank you, and thank you for a great presentation tonight. I'm just trying to understand, Mr. Goff, you talked about the long-term fiscal challenges. And I recognize that we have a lot of inadequacies in our, a lot of the facilities as they age. And I was just kind of curious, before we sort of get our heartstrings excited about the extra money that we've been discussing, how do we think about, and is that, am I using the right term when we say deferred maintenance? Or, you know, like, there's just some stuff that we have to fix. Even if we do, you know, move spaces. And I'm just curious, is that money, that extra money, are you thinking that it would be great to go towards that? I know it's not fun to sort of look at the underside side of things and replace plumbing, but, you know...
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a good question. I think it's, I think there's a certain line there, right? It's like, how much more money do you put into a facility that maybe it's seen its last days? And we've been putting significant money, I think, into all of our facilities. You know, the Rec Center is over 20 years old now, and it's seeing more maintenance, which is expected. And we're putting, using more of the Conservation Trust Fund for that, which is eligible. And, you know, this building, we just recently put almost a half a million in, a lot for safety improvements. But, you know, I think the public works, and Karen mentioned the Parks Shops at Anderson Building, you know, their plans are just to open up some of the walls, or put some windows in, do some interior, I think, improvements for staffing. But City Hall, it's like, how much, you know, how much more do you do? You know, there's always been talks about improving this area, the council chambers, more technology. But if we want to be serious about the new building with the Lutheran, you know, campus, do you just do minimal maintenance until you can get by? Everybody's mentioned several times, we keep running out of space. The more staff we add, the more, the less space we have. I think we've used every closet and every, under stairwell for offices and storage space. So I'm not answering your question, but it's, I think we are putting a significant amount of money into the buildings just to keep them usable for now. But maybe back to Mr. Stites' question, it's like, do we really take this on and do a master plan for city facilities for the future to understand what that need is?
Right, and I guess I'm just wondering if maybe we should be thinking about some of that extra money towards that endeavor, since it's clearly something that we're all thinking about, and there is going to be a price tag, so, thank you.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Councilwoman Hoppe? Thank you. Trying to figure out which two questions I want to ask. In here, when we were talking about, like, maybe some technology updates and stuff like that, is a new website on the horizon?
Actually, yes, in that it's, we're actually do, yes, for a complete redesign with Civic Plus. Because of frankly how crazy things are right now, we're a little short-staffed. We were going to get started on it this fall, and we'll start on it closer to the end of the year. So yes.
And then my next question is, when we do potentially see some more potential funding that come into the budget, I know that there are small things, such as a sidewalk from 35th South to 32nd that is an extremely expensive sidewalk because of the elevation and the drainage and all of that business. So like, when we look at things like the second phase of Wadsworth, and that's just so close to be able to make that connection, and we potentially have extra funding, like, are those kind of little side, this is a potential wish list for when, if we have extra money that we can hit while we hit this project? Are those things, like, is there a list of those? And are we keeping an eye on those and those possibilities?
We do have a list, and I mentioned that earlier when we were looking at all those different pots of money. And we have a huge spreadsheet of unfunded projects that we think are, should be looked at at some point. Unfortunately, and like I mentioned earlier in the CIP budget, we have like a $100,000 line item for public-related projects. Unfortunately, for a sidewalk, like, you're mentioning, it's more like a million dollars probably, if not more. Ms. Hoppe's talking about the sidewalk on the west side of Wadsworth from 35th to 32nd, which there really isn't, there's nothing. I think there's a little bit of a sidewalk in front of the gas station. But it's, unfortunately, it's very expensive. We did some initial analysis of it a couple of years ago. So, yeah, can you squeeze that type of side project into a Phase 2 of Wadsworth? That might be a little more difficult. But we do have a list of all these projects that are unfunded. So if we come back to you with the $10 million that we're getting from Clerk Creek Crossing, we could have that list, we could prioritize what we think needs to get done and get some direction from you on that.
Thank you. Other questions, councilors? Councilwoman Nusselbeck?
I spoke to Patrick about this a little bit earlier today. But with, well, I'll let you all decide where maybe funds can come from for this. But potentially, with so many new families moving into Wheat Ridge, finding a way to help our neighborhood schools market themselves a little bit more. When I was talking to Patrick, he had said that there was a program that was focused on that before. And so I was just wondering if we might be able to revive that in some of our neighborhood community outreach.
And I can add to that just a little bit, give a little more context to that. But what Councilmember Nusselbeck is speaking about, and somebody, Zach, you may remember, you've been on council long enough, but it was a priority for previous councils to work with the schools on a more proactive basis to help promote our neighborhood schools. And a former council member took that on, and we had a committee put together, and we had a small budget. I think we may have a budget this year's, in this year's budget. We didn't budget anything next year, because nothing's happened with that for several years now. But we worked on working with all the principals and the schools, and put together this nice brochure that helped for new parent, new families moving in, that helped promote our schools more than just looking at test scores on a website, right? It's like, there's more to this school than that. This school does this, and this school does this. And that project, that kind of has died off the last several years. But I think that's what you're speaking about, and maybe a small budget for that or something is maybe what you're requesting.
Yeah, I just would maybe even like to look at what was done in the past and see if there's some things we can just recreate. But I was having conversations as late as yesterday with some families in my neighborhood that said that they don't know anything about their neighborhood school. So I think that'd be a great service, so thanks.
And we do have, if that's something council would like to add, maybe some money for, to work with our schools. We have a little bit of cushion, as I mentioned. We overbudget it for some of our insurances, because we were told it was going to be higher. So there's some, we could move around without impacting the fund balance.
Great. Thanks.
Spencer, can you remind me, how much, there was a booklet that was put, a marketing booklet that was put together? Do you remember how much that was? I remember it was a small amount of money, but just as an idea of if something else like that was to happen, so there's like an idea of how much it had cost?
It was fairly inexpensive. I think it was, I think honestly, it may have been free, if I remember. Laura McAvoy, our previous executive assistant, actually designed it, put it together. And I think we found a printer that I think may have printed them for us for free, if I remember. I can't remember. If not, it was only a couple thousand dollars. And we did videos too, but those were all done in-house by Jesse and his team. So I think we had a budget like $2,500 or $5,000 in the city council's budget for school outreach programs.
Councilwoman Hulting?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hoppe. Just, I guess, to make a comment on Ms. Beck's suggestion. Having done a little bit of that, I kind of crossed over some of my community work before I came on council. And I love that idea. It kind of does really take a champion, though, that's moving it forward so that we're doing an adequate job of representing all the schools in our community. And so I definitely support that. We, I think at some point, Patrick, we had talked about working with Jesse to make a video about our elementary schools, and then our secondary schools, and then our charter schools. So I think that it's a great tool, and it just, for it to work, it really does need someone who's coordinating and championing that. So I guess I would just be sort of curious, like, who we see taking that on, if that moves towards. So I don't know if that's something that you're interested in coordinating, or if we're looking at trying to, if you're thinking getting that sort of core working group back together to try and coordinate what the needs are on it. But I think it's great. I think it's good to have those type of materials that are available to people. So, didn't know if you had any ideas on that.
Well, I'm just currently doing it with my own neighborhood school right now. And so, I mean, I think what, yeah, I'm more than happy to take that on, definitely. Because I think that it's probably using a lot of resources that have already existed and putting together a group of like-minded folks. and putting together a group of like-minded folks. And I know, like, Councilmember Stites, um, does a lot of that work regularly, so maybe he wants to partner with me on that.
So I did have a couple of more questions. So, uh, so first of all, more thank you, I really appreciated seeing the public improvement project budget. I think that is something that I've, I've watched as we've had these great projects coming in, to see these little bits of sidewalk, like across the street or connecting, so being able to do those, I've noticed what a difference that's made, so. So I'm going to use one of my questions as more of a suggestion question, suggestion. In, in the budget, community development has several great metrics on page 99 that they use to, you know, measure what they're getting done in the year, and I would love to add to that, linear feet of bike lanes and sidewalks, since that is something that we are putting a lot of emphasis and resources towards, I'd like to start measuring what we're getting done there, that would be fantastic. And then a comment, kind of, I guess, maybe more for Karen. Uh, okay, as someone who goes to the rec center probably at least five days a week, I, four days a week, notice how bad the parking lot is. So I was excited to see that that is going to get some attention next year. I would really strongly like to see, um, a, a rethinking and redesign of the Clear Creek, uh, path crossing through the, through the parking lot there. I'd like to see safety enhancements around, uh, green, green markings, like, make larger the, how the, I forget the, the name, the pans for how they go from the, the street to the sidewalk, better signage, and a little bit more clearance, because it is not very safe. And then similar enhancements to the pedestrian crossing from the green to the, to the, the main building, so, um, my questions were really more, more comments and suggestions. Thank you. The great, like, the green in front of the, the rec center.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I totally agree with you on that.
Councilwoman Hoppe? Well, thank you, Councilwoman Hoppe. I have a question. At what point, so we have always had a budget of $50,000 for ADA improvements, and these are things that we're working towards. There was the, um, the feds came out, and they said, you have to have a plan by this date, you have to have your survey, you have to have your plan, and you have to start working on it. And, um, so six years ago, when I first got here, I think it was maybe five years ago, we started working on that plan. We didn't have a lot of money in our budget, we didn't have much for staffing, so we decided $50,000 was all we could handle. Now, we're a little bit bigger with a little bit bigger budget, and I'm wondering at what point can we move a little faster on that? I have family members who have mobility issues, and it's embarrassing to bring them to our community. And so at what point can we, can we really advance that for our community with more than $50,000 a year?
I'll start with that, and I think I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if Ken or Greg, but the, the preventative maintenance budget, which is proposed for 3 million next year, that, that also includes ADA improvements when those, those specific streets are done. Is that, I think that's correct, does that sound right? So it's the fifty, so there's also ADA, I'm not saying it's necessarily enough if you want to even expand it, but, um, there's more than just the 50,000 for ADA. That 50,000 is a placeholder for one-off ADA improvements, I think, but when we do a, a major street reconstruction, we do a concrete, that budget includes concrete rehab and ADA ramps and such, so there's much more than 50,000 that gets done, but still, it might be a good point that we could do more, but I, I don't know on the workload, and maybe Greg can speak to that. Or Ken.
That's certainly the correct answer, so I, I think from what I've heard from Russ Higgins, who manages that program, is it, I think about rough order, don't quote me on this, 20% of that budget goes towards the ramp reconstruction as needed in association with those, um, those reconstruction projects.
Thank you for that. Councilors, do we have any further questions? I would like to, um, ask for consensus to move forward, wait, let me just start with this. I'd like to ask for consensus for $3,500 to be added to the budget for school outreach and community work within the schools.
How much?
3,500, $3,500. Thank you. And now I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward our budget to, um, our public hearing and first reading with the, with that addition that we just found consensus for. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I got.
So we are now at staff reports, in case they have had, not had an opportunity to report anything. If you have anything to report other than budget-related, uh, City Manager Graff?
Staff, is there anything we need, anything timely that needs to be? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, elected officials reports, I'll start with Councilwoman Houghton.
Thank you, I'll keep this quick. Uh, so I mentioned last week that I am hosting a District Two community meeting on October 2nd. Uh, we're going to have a location and a time, it'll be 10 o'clock at Happiness Gardens, and, um, we will, uh, you know, it's, it's question and answer, but we'll also be covering a lot of important topics in the district, including Wadsworth, and, um, uh, we'll talk about Lutheran and a handful of other things. So I hope people can come, again, October 2nd, uh, District Two, so District Two on the 2nd, uh, from 10 to about 11:30 at Happiness Gardens, hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. Councilman Urban?
Thank you. I have been doing a little bit of research regarding race-based covenants within the Wheat Ridge community. All of these race-based covenants were enacted well before the, the city of Wheat Ridge was incorporated. That being said, they remain on our plats and in our documents, and, uh, I'm hopeful that our city attorney will be able to come up with some sort of mechanism or device or legal maneuver that we'd be able to take to either expunge these records or do what we can to, um, make sure that people know that this isn't good enough for us. So, that being said, uh, there was a student from the Colorado School of Mines that did a research project on this, and I can forge a link to that work, and it's pretty interesting to see that, uh, while it, it's not exactly per parcel, it does show subdivisions, and so, uh, there's approximately 35 that identified, and so hopefully we can come up with some way to extricate that from our records. Thank you.
Thank you. Count, did you have something about that?
No.
Councilman Stites?
Went to the Farmers 5,000 yesterday, it was great to see everybody out supporting we were high school and the local elementary schools, and Color Strand won 500 bucks for being the number one elementary school there, there, so, good, good for Color Strand. Um, I believe that's it.
Councilwoman Hutchinson?
Thank you, I just want to say thank you very much for the presentation tonight. Phew.
Councilwoman Nasler Beck? Um, thanks for a great presentation tonight, and just a couple of kudos. I talked to a neighbor who's going through, um, re, redoing, um, one of their, their, their new house they just purchased, and they walked up to me and said, um, the permitting process was so easy in Wheat Ridge, so congratulations. I was like, this is awesome. So, um, great job. And then I also just wanted to thank, um, the Veters for hosting a neighborhood, um, party, um, for everybody in our neighborhood last night. They do it every year, and it's a great opportunity for our community, so, um, love Wheat Ridge.
Thank you, Councilwoman Weaver.
Thank you. This is a question for our clerk. Um, I've had a couple of questions from constituents about their voter registration, um, status, and where they can go to find out their voted registration status. Would you mind?
I would be happy to address that question.
Thank you.
Any registered voter in Colorado can go to the website operated by the Colorado Secretary of State, and on there you can find your registration, verify that the information is accurate. You can also track your ballot, so if you mail your ballot in, when it's received and processed, you can actually see that the county clerk and recorder has received it, and it will be counted. If there's an issue with the ballot, uh, it was damaged, or they can't tell where it came from, then they will, that, that information will also be there. You can register to vote literally on Election Day, November 2nd. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Uh, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And Clerk Patrick, is there anything else you'd like to add this evening as elected official?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
We're under elected officials matters, is there anything else that you would like to add?
I have nothing further, thank you, Ma- Madam Mayor Proton.
Thank you. And City Treasurer Miller? I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller?
Maybe this is more just an observation, but I noticed that there's nothing planned for the public art fund in 2022. Uh, in 2020, there was nothing spent out of this fund, and so far, this year, we haven't spent anything in public art, and unless we're going to spend some money this year, it seems like three years is a long time not to make any investments in our public art collection, and I was just hoping to see some progress on that.
I can, I can maybe address that just because I had, um, a long conversation with the, um, chair of, um, the, oh, the, yeah, the, um, Cultural Commission, sorry. And I know that they had gone through a process, like a planning process, to get a vision of, um, the public art for the community as a whole, and what they were trying to do is save up their money to be able to have large, significant purchases in areas, so they knew Clear Creek Crossing was coming, and the, and the TOD site was coming, and they wanted to have like an actual planned, um, purchase that would, would work, like, would be able to work like throughout the corridor, or to work with the developers to get larger purchases. So I think that that's why they haven't spent anything, they were saving their money on, for that, and did, uh, like, they did a, a research and, and made a plan for, you know, when, where they were wanting to spend, you know, focus those dollars on.
I could also add to that a little bit, Chris, and maybe Ken, Ken, he's been involved, but Karen O'Donnell and Ken, uh, we, we've worked, or hired a public art consultant to help us with the planning process for the, the Wadsworth public art, the Clear Creek Crossing public art, um, I think a few others, um, and Ken, Ken, you maybe want to add to that?
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. Uh, there, there is a public art committee, uh, that's formed, I sit on it, um, with some other members of the community, um, and Kendall Peterson is our consultant that we're using, so it's always, in my experience on these committees, it takes, the, the processes take a lot of time, but we've shortlisted a list of artists for the Clear Creek Crossing project, and I would, and I, I thought we had budget set aside for that somewhere between 150 and 200,000.
I think that went in 90,000 this year?
Yeah.
We're all going to get some break.
Right, yeah, so we're, we're going to be having presentations from the shortlist of consultants coming up, I think in the next 30 to 60 days, or the, the list of artists.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoppe, well, thank you. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to reiterate two things, so, uh, like the chief said, the police department will be at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center tomorrow from 8 to 10, um, so you can have some connections with your, um, community officers. And then, um, uh, Councilwoman Hutchinson had, had mentioned that she went to a meeting about the green, um, at 38th. You can go to What's Up Wheat Ridge to see what that presentation was at that, um, meeting, and, um, to see what that was all about, so What's Up Wheat Ridge?
And provide comment.
And provide comment. And, um, with that, I'll say thank you to everybody for your time tonight, it's greatly appreciated, and for the wonderful presentation, and we're adjourned.